Is that mute?
Yes.
So this is Jeff.
Okay. Is it sure who else is on? Who else is on? There's no one on the screen.
We'll be here.
It is.
I think so. I brought my coat.
I thought about bringing a coat, but I don't wear a sweater.
I have hot beverage.
Okay, our microphones are on.
We have Director Hassler online and he. Director Hassler, can you hear us?
Yep, I hear you. I'm here.
All right. Marcia, when you're ready.
Thank you. Almost ready. I'm having some technical difficulties here. Okay, the time is seven oh five. We can reconvene the meeting.
I will reconvene the meeting, Agenda Item Four, and call the meeting to orders. Could we have the roll call, please?
Director Danziger.
Here.
Director Hassler.
Here.
Attending by Zoom from Florida. Director Dex.
Here.
Director Jorgens. President Romer.
Here. So Agenda Item Number Five, Report of Closed Session Action. We have nothing to report. Moving on to Agenda Item Six, Public Comment. Items not on the agenda. Do we have anyone prepared to comment on items not on the agenda?
We have one hand raised.
Good evening. This is Jonathan Goodwin. I live in Canyon, where the wild things are. And I have a question for Mr. Holtzman, if he's there or whomever might be representing his firm at this time, regarding the the writ of mandamus. Hocus Pocus that's against or that's going on there with the regarding the ordinance you guys passed recently. I assume, you know, legal staff is following what's going on. My concern is that it was stated in a document that the lawyer in San Francisco, sorry, Sacramento, I think, for San Francisco, representing the district, feels that the judge would be prejudiced against the district. The district would not get a fair trial from this particular judge. Wanted this particular judge to, you know, step out of the way. And the answer to that was that you forget it, you file this 15 days after the deadline. Nothing doing. But my concern is that, you know, what does that mean? Is the judge really prejudiced against the district? What's going on with that? So I'd appreciate some information and clarification about, well, I guess, one, what that means and two, why, you know, how come it got filed 15 days late? Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the comments, Jonathan. There's a reason why we have closed session, and that is that we want to avoid any discussion of tactics and strategy that might compromise our position, which we feel is a very good position going forward. So, I mean, I'll let Mr. Holtzman tell me if I'm wrong, but I think probably, no offense to you, because we always appreciate your comments, but I'm guessing that probably the better part of wisdom is to keep our fuel dry, not make any comment, and and proceed forward. I think, you know, we're required to take public comment, but we're not required to answer questions. And I hope that doesn't offend you, Jonathan, because I always appreciate both your humor and your good points. And please have enough confidence in you that, in us, that many times, and I'm not saying specifically this one, but we do anticipate your concerns and other concerns of the community even before public comment goes forward. Is that a fair response? You understand my position?
He's been back to attendee.
Okay, okay.
I can re-promote him if you're looking for.
Do we have any other public comment?
We do not have any more public comment.
Okay, well then.
Jonathan has re-raised his hand.
Well, then, yeah, I'm fine with having Jonathan give another brief opportunity to respond. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Thank you. I still had minute thirty, minute and a half on the clock when I stopped, just to, you know, show how fair this is. I'm not asking to reveal strategy, although it's pretty hard to believe that filing something fifteen. Okay, it's hard. I just got muted and unmuted. It's hard to believe that filing something 15 days after that deadline is strategic. But my question is not about your strategy. My question is about the potential, what does it mean that there's no explanation given that the judge would not be fair to the district? I think it's a matter of public concern. I would argue, you know, from my perspective, it's a matter of public concern if the judge is viewed to be, if the district's not going to get a fair trial. I mean, isn't that a matter of public concern? Maybe, you know, maybe I'm wrong about that. I'm just inquiring. Thank you.
Again, I appreciate your comments, but I think the better, the better part of wisdom is to leave it at that. I would just reiterate what I said earlier. Okay, do we have any other public comments?
We do not have any more hands raised, and we do not have any other public comment.
Okay. So let's move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, particularly seven point one, Brief Information Only Reports Related to Meetings Attended by a Director at District Expense.
President Romer, this is Director Danziger. I attended the LAFCO meeting on the fourteenth of February remotely, and there wasn't any real substantial items to report back, only that they did receive, announce that they were going to get a 4.5% salary increase to the people who work for LAFCO.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other reports, many other directors? I don't have anything to report. So let's move on to seven point two, Questions and Informational Comments from Board Members and Staff. We have anything? Hearing nothing, we move on to seven point three, Communications Received. Zero point one, LAFCO Vacancy on Contra Costa LAFCO, Alternative Public Member. I did note this on the agenda when I was preparing for the meeting last week, and I know there's an available.
It's later on in the agenda.
Oh, it's later on in the agenda?
Yeah, this particular correspondence was in regards to a public member seat, and it was just notice, a notice.
All right. And then there, I acknowledge that I read the Communication seven point three point oh three from former Director Fred Wilde, is that how he pronounced? And I also read Steve Cohen's response to that. Any other comments?
I would just note that Steve Cohen did send it to all five of us.
Yes, okay.
We all received his.
Appreciate both of those comments. Moving on to seven point four, Fire Chief Updates.
Evening, Directors. We'll start with Mary Smith with the Finance Report.
Good evening, Directors. We're going to start with our finance report tonight. Start with the Strike Team Reimbursement. To date, we have a Strike Team Receivable Outstanding of $52,000, $52,592. And since the last board meeting, we have received $198,000 in payments. So OES is paying our invoices. Next slide, please, Marcia. The Tunnel East Bay Hills update, there was a project budget of $6.3 million. We have invoiced Cal Fire through twelve thirty-one, $2.1 million, of which we have received payment of 1.1. We have an outstanding receivable of $952,542. That is the fourth quarter invoice that we have sent to Cal Fire, and that was sent on January thirty first, twenty four. Treasury Bill Update. The district now has $24.2 million invested in treasury bills. The treasury bill maturity is laid out for you there. The staff continues to project cash flows to determine the amount of reinvestment available when the treasury bills mature. And last slide, Other Items. We have a new timekeeping application in place for our academy candidates, which will replace paper time sheets. In January, St. Mary's College paid the outstanding receivable of $49,000 for their nuisance alarms from August 2022 through December 2023. They paid that via credit card. In January, St. Mary's was issued a new invoice for, in the amount of $6,000 for January nuisance alarms. Also, the interim audit will take place the week of March eleventh. That concludes my report unless there are any questions.
Next, we have the Human Resources Report.
Good evening, Directors. Tonight I have a Brief Recruitment and Employment Change Update. In regards to the recruitment update for firefighter paramedic trainee, the five trainees attending the Confire Academy continue to progress, and the projected graduation date will be on May twentieth. The Promotional Fire Engineer Exam Application Period is open through April seventh, and the examination process will be held on April ninth, tenth, and eleventh. And in regards to employment changes, we had a Fuels Mitigation Specialist resign in January, and a recruitment has been opened to fill the vacancy, and interviews are projected to be held in mid-March to fill that vacancy. And unless there are any questions, that can.
Where did the person go that resigned?
They did not give us that information.
And is that one of the grant-funded positions?
It is. It is, yes. That's it. All right. Thank you.
And next we'll have Jeff Isaacs appearing remotely for the Fire Marshal Report.
Good evening, Directors. For the month of January, we had to focus in fire prevention. The Fuels Mitigation Staff was working on the Juniper Enforcement. We have made it all the way through Maraga and Arinda and issued pre-citation notices to all the properties that were found to be in violation. We're receiving numerous phone calls every day in the office with folks having questions about the requirements, some asking for additional time, and then we have a few that are letting us know that they're refusing to comply, and we would just have to follow through with the citation process. We take every opportunity we can to educate them if they will stay on the phone long enough. The other focus was on the dorm inspections, working with St. Mary's facility staff. We've gone back and re-inspected two of the dormitory buildings that we did an initial walkthrough with members of the Office of the State Fire Marshal. We could definitely see there was a lot of effort by St. Mary's staff that was put into trying to comply. Still a few minor violations present, and then we did one new building that also failed. That concludes my report unless the Directors have any questions.
Thank you, Jeff.
We'll move over to the Tunnel East Bay Hills. We've had Crew Twelve working around the Wilder Community, doing the fuel reduction work there. We have over a hundred piles that are established, ready to burn. We're just waiting for the, a couple weeks of dry weather to get in there. We have the burn plan and the air quality permits submitted. We just need the weather to be in our favor. And then the plan is, come springtime, once the fire trails dry out enough, so we're not causing erosion issues, we'll get back getting multiple crews on the project to get this finished out. Again, that concludes my report.
Directors for the Home Hardening Grant Program under Item eight point eight on the Consent Agenda will be authority to purchase more of the gutter gloves. We continue to move that product very quickly. We have not yet reached the cap of how much demand there is for it. We don't want to over-order, obviously, given the size. That's pretty bulky stuff. So we recommend approving that on consent. We'll place that purchase, receive it, distribute it, and then we'll assess whether there continues to be competitive demand for additional gutter gloves.
So in the conversations I've had with friends, neighbors, you know, people at the club, whatever, I've never heard of a single person that's heard of our program, not one single person. Obviously, people come and use it, so, you know, and I've sent emails out to HOA and things like that. But we need to, I don't know, put a banner up across where the BART station is and the underpass, or do something so that people know that it's available, I think, so that we actually can.
Yes, sir. I agree in that you're, we struggle with that. I regularly get emails addressed to the Arinda Fire Chief and miss calling my name. So we have a lot of work to do to get the word out, and folks are busy living their lives. We have been holding off on a full-court press, on announcing it mostly in the sense that we have, whatever means is currently being distributed, or that awareness is being built. It's meeting our supply. We'll continue to lift the ways, increase awareness, particularly as we get out of the rainy months. And this is obviously a program that has a lot of interest. We'll continue to find ways to get more word out.
But the rainy months are the time they can do it without having to, you know, clean the gutters out and things as they were. So why don't we just put sandwich signs out on some of the roads, and it doesn't cost hardly anything to do it?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We're, as I said, we haven't put a lot of effort into the additional advertising, since we've had a lot of folks coming through trying to get it. We don't want to build up more demand than we can handle. As we get a handle, as we, as we get caught up with the past due demand, absolutely, sir, we'll look to increase how much, how much advertising we're doing to build interest and be able to move this out.
Because we have a lot of money left in the budget to pay for it. So why don't we just order twice as much and hope?
Yes. Is it, we do run out of space and put it all, especially during the rainy month. Next, we'll have Operations Update. Time Chief Steve Gamm.
Hi, good evening, Directors. Here to present your Ops Report for the early month of February. Okay, so I'm sure many people noticed that this month we've been inundated with quite a bit of weather. It's been very wet, and we've had quite a bit of wind. One of those dates specifically was February fourth. As you can see here, as much of the warnings that were received by many folks in our area. And with the video showing here, this is our tablet command, which is showing a twelve-minute period of how busy it was. And you're looking at about thirty calls and, you know, less than ten minutes. So the county was definitely challenged on this day, as they were many days this month, as we were dealing with flooding, multiple vehicle accidents, and several trees down, especially in our district. Next slide, please. One thing that we use to support us in the county, especially when we have events like we did on the fourth, especially like events when we have weather in the summertime with wildfire risk, is the County EOC. The County EOC is a big benefit for us as far as resource ordering, logistics, that can support us if we're inundated with calls or a significant incident. Next slide. On the fourth, our county put up a pre-positioned Task Force with resources throughout the county. These folks responded throughout the county as other agencies, including ourselves, would get busy or inundated with multiple calls. They would be there to support and help agencies that were busy at the time.
So they staged it here in Arinda?
They were staged throughout the county, so they moved throughout the county. So they wouldn't be in one specific spot for the whole time.
Big trees.
So this is one of the problems we dealt with with this month. We had a lot of trees coming down. Neighbors Contra Costa had this tree going to this complex here, as you can see on the left. And this recently happened a couple days ago. We had a large tree come down over Pinehurst Road, which actually prevented access for us into the community of Canyon for about fourteen hours. Now, the biggest impact we have as Fire District when we get rain and wind is, we spend a lot of time on the freeway. We get a lot of vehicle accidents. With the wet roads, we see this quite a bit. As you can see here, you can see heavy damage to this vehicle. And if you can imagine, that used to be in that vehicle before it crashed. So it takes a very high rate of speed for that much damage. Next slide. As you can see here, here's the guard rail from that, that incident. That's a twelve-by-twelve-foot piece of wood. And obviously, that was sheared off by the impact of that vehicle. So here's a few, we've, like I said, we've had multiple vehicle accidents. We've, our crews have spent quite a bit of time on the freeway. The top right here, we had an extrication inside the Caldecott Tunnel on Board Four. As you can see, we had a couple calls here. These are eastbound twenty-four here. And one thing I want you to pay attention to is if you look at the picture here in the top left, and notice how our trucks are positioned. For us, one of the most dangerous environments that we encounter are, one, in these type of weather scenarios, two, is being on the freeway. What we, in the Fire Department, we encounter a lot of dangerous environments, but a lot of those are predictable and preventable, and we can handle those. We can't predict what people are going to do on the freeway. People drive too fast. Lights seem to be distracting, and it's, it's, it's surprising what you see out there. So it's very important that our crews position for our safety that we block, so that way we don't have anyone coming and hit us. Now, with that said, going to the next slide. Monday night, even though we were blocking on the freeway, Engine Forty-three was struck by a vehicle on Highway twenty-four, approximately ten o'clock at night. Very minor damage, actually hit the front tire of Engine Forty-three. That vehicle probably suffered most of the damage to the passenger side door, and that vehicle just kept going. So we never found out. We reported the incident to CHP. But again, this is a reminder of, to our folks and to our community, that for us, the freeway, or any roadway in particular, especially where cars can transfer, move at a high rate of speed, is very dangerous to us. So I know this personally, as I was involved in the December second, two thousand and twelve incident, when our crews were hit and struck by a vehicle along with one civilian. So it, it's very important that, one, our vehicles positioned in a way that we can protect ourselves, but also it's, you know, community knowledge that if you see a fire truck on the freeway, please slow down. I know people are in a hurry, but it's, it's a very dangerous situation for us and for those folks who are in that accident or in that zone on the freeway.
Do we put flares out and all that?
CHP usually puts flares. We put cones out. And honestly, the best thing for us is that big truck and take as many lengths as we can.
But even before that.
Oh, yes. Yeah, cones, cones, flares, trucks, CHP cars, Caltrans vehicles, we'll take it all. Next slide, please. On February tenth, about three o'clock in the morning, crews responded to a residential structure fire in the Dos Postos neighborhood. Crews made a quick and very aggressive stop. They conducted a primary search and ensured that no one was in the structure. They later found the individuals or the residents of the structure in a nearby house. This was a challenging house, because as a lot of our structures in our district, they're hillside structures. Hillside structures pose a significant danger to us, because we could be entering above the fire, which causes that heat and smoke to come into the point where we enter the structure. But as I said, our crews did very well with this. It was quickly knocked down, quickly searched, and there was no extension or exposure into any other area than what you see here of the structure.
Your closet.
I do not know. It's under investigation.
One of our point out Directors on the center right, you see the OSB on one of the windows that was broken from a tree down the night before during the high wind event. Just Steve's point about there are things you can prepare for having OSB where there should be a window. These are those things that can cause firefighters to end up in a space they had not anticipated, because the building has been altered. So the fact that this mid-slope at night, all these other things, and some modifications to the structure, and still pulled off a stop of a well-involved fire was a very well-played and well-executed, and conditions were set for that success by the first arriving engine, and their decisions that set everyone else for success. Given there's just not a lot of room to operate here. You're not quickly running around back when you're on a cantilever mid-slope deck like that. Thank you.
And lastly, as Christine Russell mentioned, we have five folks in the Contra Costa County Recruit Academy right now. I have been working closely with academy staff for the last seven weeks. We're almost at the halfway point. I am happy to say that all five of our recruits are doing very well, and I have high expectations for all of them. And hopefully, we will see all five of them at their graduation on the twentieth, and they can start filling some spots for us online. But at the moment, right now, they're all doing very well.
Great.
And that's all I have. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Moving on to Consent, the Consent Item.
We have public comment for the announcements.
Sorry.
Jonathan Goodwin.
Please don't forget about me, President Romer.
I could never forget about you, Jonathan.
I just did. I forgive you.
Not you personally, I just forgot we needed public comment.
I understand.
Luckily, I have Marcia to remind me.
Yeah, well, it all worked out. So I want to make a comment and then ask a question. The comment is, over the years, this agency and the fire service in general has sometimes been disappointing when it comes to tribal memory, institutional memory, some people call it, and I'm really happy to see that the grievous injuries suffered by the three firefighters on the freeway some years ago, as well as the two Confire firefighters who were killed in ventilation gone not right, some years ago. I'm really glad to see that the lessons from that are, if you will, still burning in the hearts of people who really need to remember them. I I just, I just want to express appreciation for that. Question is, I know after the tunnel fire, you know, it happened on a Sunday morning, and the staffing at Dispatch was light in both counties, and Dispatch was just flattened. It was a really hard day, and my understanding is that after that, there were procedures put in place so that there would be what they call up-staffing, you know, increased staffing, you know, maybe before possible large events and certainly during. And I'm wondering if the same thing has, the same sort of procedure is necessary or has happened for these large water events, if you will. I mean, three incidents in a minute just for these five stations? I mean, you know, pun intended, Dispatch must have been swamped in all of that. I'm just wondering if they have procedures to anticipate that. Thank you very much.
That was, that screenshot B.C. Galing showed, that was countywide, well, everyone less Richmond, but, and San Ramon, so the rest of the countywide dispatch. And yes, as we do with the pre-position of resources for response, we pre-position resources at Dispatch on the Sunday, the in-question where call volume was very high. In additional, in addition to the extra dispatchers, there were two chief officers in there to adjudicate calls and reduce the traffic as we moved into. As we moved into triage in some parts of the county where there were calls stacked up waiting assigned units.
Great. Well, I'm glad, uh, you know, lessons are learned and things are getting better as we move along. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Jonathan. Have there any other public comments?
We do not have any more hands raised.
So we could move on to the consented item, uh, consent agenda. Uh, and Director Jorgens, do you, do you want to pull something?
I'd like to pull eight point six and eight point seven.
Okay.
And did you want to open public comment for the consent agenda items?
Yes, let's do so.
We do not have any hands raised for a public comment.
Okay, so if we pull eight point six and eight point seven, do we just, is the procedure discussed?
Then to approve the consent agenda except for eight point six and eight point seven.
I'll second.
Do we need a roll call on that?
Director Dan Ziger.
Aye.
Director Hasler.
Aye.
Director Jex.
Aye.
Director Jorgens.
Aye.
President Romer.
Aye. Okay, moving on to, then we move on to eight point six, the monthly financial report.
So it's kind of the same question in both of them.
Okay, so let, let's, we, should we do eight point six and eight point seven at the same time?
Sure, it's, it's, I think literally the same problem.
Okay.
So as I understand it, the way that. Financials are put out, um, the county gives us, we invest in T bills. The county, um, in my opinion incorrectly. Gives us the, the value of the T bills as if they had already reached maturity and, and accrued all the interest that they have. Which is not true. So for example, on the. You know, it shows that the current period, which is, you know, the first six months had six hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars worth of investment earnings. And as I understand it. You know, that wasn't how much we actually had accrued. That was the end of, that was the amount that was going to happen when they wrote maturity. Is that roughly correct?
Yes.
So I think this is the same issue that happened. Several months ago at the, at the year-end audit and all of that, but it was a really small number because the interest rates are really tiny. But now, you know, this number is, and, and again, crude numbers, but it seems to me that's more like three hundred thousand dollars or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is how much we, according to the table that was presented earlier, which I'm not sure I know which table it was anymore. Um, but that showed the investment earnings and it had, some of them had already matured. So those numbers, we actually, you know, for the bank, that's good. And then the other ones, it showed a market value and it showed an investment value. And the difference between those two, if that, if those numbers were the market value at the end of the year. Should have been how much we had accrued in interest on those, those bonds. And it seems to me that should have been the current period. And I realize we didn't get the data from the county, but that's what they should have done. It just isn't what they did. So to me, it makes our financials look really screwy because we're going to earn fourteen thousand dollars on twenty-seven million dollars for the next. You know, six months, which is not really what's going to happen. So how can we figure out how to make that not happen anymore? And can more accurately reflect what's truly happening in our finances? Because they're not using accrual accounting to do that by definition. That's just not right.
John?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm, yes. That you're on a cash basis, except on quarter ends or. On the annual audit, then it's accrued.
Right. So what happens when, for instance, in the significant ones in December, I bought a twelve point six million dollar T bill. And so what happens is then the county, they buy it for us and the county does, has their accounting and they send us monthly report. So in their report, they gave it, they give us full, uh, credit for the in- investment earnings on the day that was bought, December sixteenth, I think it was. So, so then we record that. So then we back, we balance on a monthly basis to the investment balances and so forth on the county statements. So that's what's happening. So, right. So it's basically on a cash basis until June thirtieth and at year, once a year at June thirty fiscal year end. Is then when we go ahead and we accrue things. So it'll be at June thirty then is when I was planning to, if there was any material. Changes or that things that needed to be accrued, then for investment earnings, then it would be adjusted at that point.
But it's not a cash basis. The cash would be that we, we have the amount we invested. That's the cash basis would be accrued. The earnings that we're going to have when it matures aren't cash. So they're not doing it on a cash basis. They're doing it on a full accrual basis. I mean, on a, on a forward cash basis, which is just. There's no accounting that makes that correct, as far as I know. You can't, they're, they're literally counting, you buy them at a discount and then when they mature, they're, they, they go up in value. That's the way you buy treasures. And so they're saying, they're giving us the value when it matures the day we buy it. But I don't know anybody.
And if, if we had, if for some emergency, we had to sell in or in, we wouldn't.
Get that much money.
Wouldn't get that much money. So does it make sense then? And does it involve too much staff time to. List that at the purchase price, which is until, until we actually get, until we sell the bond, in which case. We.
All I have to do is on that one day at the, you know, even if you just do it, you don't have to do it monthly, but at least for the.
Yeah.
This is, this was for our mid-year budget review. And so it only happens once. You, you can look up the market value of a bond, any bond, it's online. Just look it up and there it is and it gives you to, you know, four different places what the value is. It, it, it takes three minutes to look up each one of them. We only have seven or something, right? So it, it's not a, and a county could do it too, by the way.
But they don't.
But it's, but it's totally, if, if, yes, we're going to get that much money when they mature, for sure, and, and it's locked in and the government's going to pay their bill and that's great. But we haven't, you know. We haven't realized that money yet, so it doesn't seem appropriate to me to put it on our balance sheet as money.
Makes sense.
I'm not an accountant, but I've never heard of putting on what I would call fake numbers at that, you know, early on a balance sheet.
Your directors, Jackson, Hassler, have a opinion on that? They're the accountants here.
I, I'm not quite sure. I mean, I, I didn't look at the, uh, that particular report.
If, if I may just to briefly summarize as a non-accountant, sort of when we make the purchase of the T bill. The county makes a ledger entry and sends us essentially crediting as if it is matured, which it is not. And in the case of a twelve million dollar T bill, maturing six months later, it ends up being a real number. Right. Closest the auditor last year and it was immaterial because the numbers were so small last year. Right. It will be material this year. Um, staff has made efforts to ensure we don't cross a fiscal year. So to don't complicate booking something in June that doesn't mature until the following fiscal year. But the original sin here is essentially that once the county. Records it and gives us credit for it via that ledger entry, we now start potentially creating a, a separate structure. Um, which is obviously not ideal, um, exactly to Director Romer's point. If we were to have to liquidate, it would not liquidate. For future value, of course, we endeavor not to. And so then I, I think really the question is to Director Jorgen's point. This is not, this is not right. This is not how we would build it where we were building it, but we're not because we use the county treasury. And so we have a challenge that I would ask for the directors to consider that having noted it and aware of it and taking measures to ensure. That this doesn't cross fiscal year boundaries, which can complicate a lot of things. It, it would be a non-trivial event to create a separate accounting. To include the market value that, that would reflect the updates, but to what, to what ends and to what point, given that, that these are, these are balances. That are not going to be accessed, um, almost that, that's why we're able to buy T bills. Uh, and so my concern is that we could potentially create a significant amount of staff work to create a, an alternate structure. That mirrored, that, that separated from the county ledger and then provided, uh, at either monthly or. Bimonthly or quarterly or at whatever interval the board would direct. A market value that is all somewhat hypothetical because it is our intent to hold this to maturity and that we would be creating a, a, a parallel accounting. That would more accurately reflect our condition. I one hundred percent agree with that statement, but at a cost. Um, and it's a lot of time or a little time. It is still time for folks that are visiting lots of them.
Isn't it approved just to market as the, at the purchase price and, uh. In, in terms of conservatively budgeting our resources, is just to say. You know, we, 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 we market at the purchase price and we don't market at the, uh. Maturity price until it's sold.
Well, it's linear. So if you did it at the six-month point, right, which is what we just did, what this all shows is the six-month point. So you only do that once a year, right? Six months. It's linear. It's literally by definition linear between the beginning and the end. It's, they're all even numbers of months, right? So. You, you count, count how many months you take, half the number if it's a year-long bond and you get, I mean, it. I'll do it for you. How's that? It'll take me twenty minutes. I'll do it. Because it's, it's three hundred thousand dollars wrong on the column that we have. And that's a pretty big number.
I, I mean, it's dangerous for me to talk about accounting, but I, I think the difficulty, Director Jorgens, with your approach is. If you were to sell that T bill at that moment, at the six-month moment.
Yeah.
I don't know that you could get.
You would get exactly that. Unless the market, unless the market rate of interest had changed, which it can a little bit, but not much these days.
Well, isn't it, I mean, isn't it a term? I mean, don't you have to?
No, you can sell it any day you want. They're completely liquid. There's no anything.
I, I'm just.
It's the most liquid, it's literally the most liquid market of anything in the world.
I guess my, my concern is just that. Anytime you're messing with the number you get from the county, right? Well, but what we know is it's wrong, but I, 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 I kind of, you know, I get that, but I think Director Romer has a pretty good point that maybe, maybe the easier way to do this. Is so you're not overcounting your assets to just go back to the purchase price. It's a lot simpler.
Why don't you just put a footnote on it that says it's estimated, you know, because all the, at, at the, at the end of the day, the last column is going to be our updated budget number anyway. You know, what we think we're going to spend by the end of the year. But at the moment, you know, it makes it look like we're going to earn fourteen thousand dollars. We earned six hundred and ninety thousand dollars in the first six months. We're going to earn fourteen thousand dollars in the next six months. That doesn't sound like the right answer.
I, I think, I, I think everybody can agree that you don't want to overvalue the asset for the purpose of audit. That does seem. I think, I don't know, Gloria, tell me, but I mean. From an audit perspective, I will seem to be.
Or I can fix the audit. It, it's going to be solved by the end of the year, which is fine, but, but this is the one-time mid-year estimate that we're doing.
Well, sorry, this is Director Hassler. Couldn't, I, I think just putting a footnote on, right, is that, the, the, like, if they're listing it, just say there's. Unearned revenue of X dollars at the time of purchase. So, so there's a footnote that says. We booked it at this, but there's unearned revenue and we know what that number is, right? Don't we know? We bought a bond at ninety-seven and it's going to go up to a hundred. So we know there's three unearned revenue on it and just put that as a footnote.
But you're saying list the purchase price rather than the eventual sales price with the.
No, list the sales price. Keep what they're doing, just keep what they're doing with a footnote. So the reader of the financial statement knows that there is.
Is there an important revenue? Being i- i- consistent with the county's practice, even if the county's practice is wrong?
Well, the problem, come back to it. Our accounting is on a cash basis except for certain periods. And there are substantial accrual and adjustments that are made. Which typically would be the quarterly review. Budget review and the end of the year. What you don't want to do is mix just one item. Rather than all of the others. There's a lot of other unrecorded liabilities and the unrecord receivables. That are also not on the financial statements I'm with.
So eight point seven is literally called the quarterly investment report.
Okay.
Right. It has a column called market value.
Right. And so when you were looking at your quarterly review. It probably. Have you, when you're putting the estimated adjustments coming forward. Whether we're not going to be online or not, I mean, on, on target in terms of our budget or over or under. You reflected all of that in that. Report.
Yes, in my projection. So that's why I project for the whole fiscal year to try to take into these, these different nuances. So in the mid-year budget review, well, when we get to it, you'll see the projections are for the full fiscal year.
Right, because I think that's where I saw what the estimated earnings from the, are there.
Correct.
Okay.
But this one page has a hundred percent of the data. There's not a single other piece of data you need in the world, but this one page that has every piece of data you need. It has. The, the purchase price, it has the par value, which is what you're going to get at the end, and it has the current market value as of December thirty-first. That by definition is the thing you're looking for. That plus the interest you actually have already, because some of them matured and, and you got your money. It's literally adding up six numbers that are on it. And I assume whoever gave us the numbers, it, it's correct. I mean.
Yeah.
So we, there's no research to go to. It's literally on the report. So at least we can put the number on the, we can add these numbers up on the report and put that as the footnote to say it's. Or I, I would personally put this, the number that you add up with that in the numbers and say in reality, you know, but the number we have from the county, which is the long number. Is something else. I'd footnote the county's number and put the right number in person, but that's not accounting. It's all, it's our internal numbers anyway. It's not some, we're going to audit. It's for budget purposes. Doesn't have to be. They aren't audited anywhere. They're all estimates, right?
Yeah, and, and so I, I think the question, exactly to your point, since it is an internal number is, is, if, and. Either in the current manner or in a, a purchase manner with the caveat, with the footnote. Letting know this will mature on this date and the interest of this. Uh, from my perspective, as I said, I do have some concerns about when we start deviating from the letter. We now, we start creating. Parallel ways of accounting for the same money and that there's complexity there and there's opportunity for. When the ledger says one thing and we're now accounting for the other. And so it, it certainly supports pleasure to direct something else, but to Director Hassler's point. I think of an artful solution would be to footnote that the, the number which appears here will not be realized until its maturity date. And that includes as-yet unearned interest, that absence, uh, liquidation of the bill prior to its maturity, the district will earn.
Okay, but, but at the end of the day, you're going to look at the model and today you're going to ask us to change the budget and do things? And we, and the one thing we know with certainty is that the revenue number in that is off by three hundred thousand dollars. So you're, you're literally going to show this this balance sheet. We know by definition the balance sheet is off by over three hundred thousand dollars and you're going to ask us to make a three million dollar decision. On ma- data that we know is off by three hundred thousand dollars.
Well, I ca- except I, I can't took that into consideration on my projections. So my, right, when we get to mid-year budget review. The budget adjustments that are recommended are based on the projection for the whole fiscal year.
I agree with it. Okay. We got to tell the county they're doing the math wrong. That's the, that's the takeaway. Call the county and say, you're doing the math wrong. There's no accounting world in the. Accounting, the way they're doing it doesn't exist. It's just wrong. And they need to fix it. That's not, they should, they're sending you bad data that makes you, that blows up your balance sheet and makes it look incorrect.
Is, I think that's probably the, I mean, that, that would be the best solution, obviously, was to correct the ledger. So we'll follow up. With the county and determine why they do that and what options we have to, to align with the actual availability of funds versus anticipated.
And until the county, until or unless the county does that, we follow Director Hassler's.
We'll, we'll footnote.
Footnote.
Footnote. Inter- it's not been going down, but we only did this for like six months, so it, next year it could be a six hundred thousand.
Very much so. This is, this was not a problem when we were buying a small number or no T bill that we were in late at one percent.
And are you going to apologize to everybody for making such a great investment, uh, decision for, for the department and for the community? And just kidding. So I think we have, do we have a consensus on what we are going to do on that? Is that?
Yeah, okay, so I'll, I'll.
All right.
Move that we then approve these two things as they're written. Eight point six and eight point seven.
Wait a second. Uh, seconds, like, all right, let's have a roll call. Oh, do we have to have public comment on this before we have the roll call? Did we already? No, okay.
Not for consent items. We open public comment in the beginning and then.
Okay, all right, and let's have a roll call.
Director Dan Ziger.
Aye.
Director Hassler.
Aye.
Director Jex.
Aye.
Director Jorgens.
Aye.
Present Romer.
Aye. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number nine point one, mid-year budget review. Fiscal year twenty twenty-four and approval of capital projects, fund expenditure, et cetera.
Good evening, directors. It's time for the mid-year budget review. The original budget projected a general fund deficit of six hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. The updated projection through quarter two projected deficit of three hundred fifty thousand dollars. General fund revenue is projected to exceed budget three hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. Primarily due to higher investment earnings due to board direction to invest in U S Treasury bills instead of late. This next slide is a new graph and it's to illustrate projected actual budget and year-to-date revenue. You can see at the bottom that property tax revenue will meet budget. I wanted to draw your attention to supplemental property tax revenue, which is highlighted on this slide. Supplemental property taxes are generated following an ownership change of a property or completion of new construction, such as an addition or a remodel. Last fiscal year, the district received one million dollars in supplemental property tax revenue. Uh, right, yes, sorry, you're on the wrong slide. There you go. Uh, so last year we received a million dollars in supplemental property tax revenue, which was the highest in the history of the district. So due to higher interest rates now, few significantly fewer. So due to higher interest rates now, few significantly fewer new homes are selling. And which will result in less supplemental property tax revenue in the current fiscal year. The district will receive, will get one more payment in, well, we get two more payments of supplemental in May and June of this year. Um, so the projection for the fiscal year is three hundred thousand dollars for supplemental. This graph details ambulance activity. The graph on the left is a new graph that I developed, it compares the timeframe of July to December for the last seven fiscal years. And you can see the number of transports through quarter two are less in this year that we're in. General fund expenditures are projected to exceed budget sixty-seven thousand dollars. Salaries and retirement contributions are projected less than budget due to eight vacancies that we had for the first half of the fiscal year. Overtime is projected to exceed budget due to the vacancies as well as workers' comp and use of lead. The mid-year projections include the OPEB contribution based on the most recent actuarial report, which was less than the budget. And the pension rate stabilization trust fund contribution.
Should we, can we ask questions along the way or do you want to do it at the end?
Please, go ahead.
So I noticed that that one of the biggest drivers of the excess cost in in um. Was lead, that i- in its dramatically like fifty percent higher than it was in even twenty twenty, when you know, bad COVID and all those kind of fun things that were going on. So is that a trend that we're expecting to continue next year or this year, the rest of this year, what's going to be happening with that?
Right, well, a lot of it is due to workers' compensation injuries, we have a lot of people that have been off for a long time. So it's difficult to project and we don't know. I want to highlight two line items in the operating expense category. For the home hardening grant program, the budget includes five hundred thousand dollars, projected expenditures are two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars.
And I I I guess. I I want to, I don't know who came up, probably Chief came up with what he thought the estimate was going to be, but. It seems to me we ought to be, we allocated it, we kind of owe it to the community, we ought to be trying to figure out how to spend that, not use it as a reserve to do something different with. Because it doesn't roll over, so that's back to my, put out the sandwich boards, put the signs up, make sure people actually get the benefit out of the stuff we have budgeted.
Yes, sir, the the other part of that is that there there is a capacity issue that. If 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 everyone in the community wanted them, um, we don't, Dennis and Jeff have been handling the distribution with utilizing the. Fuel mitigation specialists when they're not doing the chipping and power burning and so forth, so. There's also a, sorry, there's a, there's a pace at which we can move um to process these, given that that it does take a lot of time. Particularly on the things we're doing in kind distributions, that there, there's a staff. Tax, and then we've been relying heavily on our volunteers with regard to the distribution days, and there's only so often we can run those. So so part of this is we we are bumping up against just the speed with which we can move um with our existing resources. The human resources that it takes to the process and distribute, so we're, there. We could do more to advertise, absolutely, um, I don't know that we can currently handle more distribution, we're about maxed out in that regard.
We could ask for more volunteers to help. Boy Scouts, whatever, I mean.
All of which taken, uh, the volunteers aren't free, it takes a, that takes a lot of time and effort to organize. Get them there and then to ensure they show up, um, having made that commitment, so Boy Scouts is an example. Is a route we've traveled a lot of times, uh, and very rarely, uh, nets a meaningful turnout of the folks that. Will be there on the Friday and Saturday um to distribute, we we tried that with um. Predecessor to the fact A program, we've tried that with some limited income and elderly. Fuel mitigation product, defensible space work, uh, it just has not panned out as far as the resources, it's very, it is available in the quantities we need for this kind of work.
Outside attorney fees are projected to exceed budget a hundred thousand dollars. And you can see in the lower right part of the slide, the twenty-one percent of legal costs to date are due to the fuel break lawsuit. Staff will make line item adjustments to the general fund budget, so no budget adjustment is necessary at the board level. The district's start of the fiscal year was seventeen point five million dollars in unrestricted fund balance in the general fund. The projected deficit would decrease the balance to seventeen point one million at the end of the fiscal year. Staff recommends one mid-year budget adjustment. It's the capital projects fund expenditure budget adjustment decrease is recommended in the amount of three million seven hundred ninety-four thousand nine hundred six dollars. To reflect the elimination of the station forty-one administration construction project this year. And the addition of the station forty-five remodel project. Staff also recommends the board authorize the operating transfer out of the general fund into the capital projects fund, the amount of three million dollars. To accumulate funds for future capital projects.
Question. We take out of the budget three million four. Because we're not doing station forty-one. When we put the, put it into the budget or restricted uh or reserved. We were building over a period of time, so we would have the cash. To pay for station forty-one. We're still going to be doing station forty-one. It may be delayed a year or two. But why would we reverse that?
So it was, okay, so I'm recommending a budget adjustment to decrease the capital projects expenditures. How much is going to be spent between now and June thirty by the three billion dollar number? Um, because we're not going to spend that money, so but but we, so then. So at the next budget, we can look at sending more money from the general fund to capital.
If you looked at the long-range forecast, we had forecasted a nineteen million dollar reserve for capital expenditures. We're still going to need the nineteen million. So why would you reverse the three four? Because there's in. Plan for next year, so there's another three million.
Right, so in the next long-range forecast, which is going to come at the next meeting, then I'll adjust the long-range forecast. So that that money still ends up into the capital projects fund, it's just going to be a couple of years down the road.
So we're saying we're going to have more resources in the future than now.
We're, we're, oh. We're taking money, we're not spending capital, but the problem is, I think he's saying.
Taking it out of the reserve.
We're not putting it in, the difference between the two, we're saying is extra. And what he wants to do is leave.
See, I think we have three million, three million. And now you're reversing out three million four.
We're, we're, we're taking out five point eight on on things that we were supposed to be spending. And we're only putting two million in, which means we're taking three point eight out of our expected expenditures.
Okay, so the the budget, the capital projects fund budget to expend was ten point, is ten point seven million dollars. Okay, we're not going to spend ten point seven million because we're not rebuilding station forty-one this fiscal year.
Right.
Right, so I project that we are going to spend four million dollars, right, in this fiscal year. So that's why I'm recommending a budget adjustment to decrease that budget. But if you don't want to, you don't have to, it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
Well, the other thing, I guess, are we really, because the other thing you're asking is to put two million dollars, or, this is. The end of February, we're not going to have another meeting, we haven't even approved spending two million dollars yet, we haven't seen a proposal to spend two million dollars, we actually have to spend the cash. This is all cash. Are we really going to write the check for two million dollars?
It's very unlikely, sir, but. What it didn't want to do was have to come back and ask for a correction, given that if we don't spend it, it would go back into capital we spend next year.
Well, when we were putting it into the capital fund. It was for future capital expenditures and current.
Right.
And so when we were budgeting, we were budgeting a certain amount per year into the capital fund. To pay for the long-term capital expenditures. They may not all occur in the year when we reserve it.
So I guess the question, I think maybe the question is, what's the current budget, say, we're supposed to be putting into the capital budget, capital fund?
Three million dollars.
And you're now asking to put more in?
No, it's the same, it's, that's what authorized it, transfer out of the general fund into the capital projects fund of three million dollars.
Which is what was in our budget all along.
Correct.
From last year, or from eight months ago, seven months ago.
Yes.
So that you're not reversing out of the reserve, out of the capital fund, the three million four.
They're putting it in, they're they're putting in what.
Putting in three more mil, three, three million, three hundred. Versus three four.
Okay, so the 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 original budget had a transfer out of the general fund into the capital projects fund of three million dollars.
Right.
So that's what, under this item, that's what I'm recommending, that the board authorized the completion of that transfer.
It's, it's the reversal of the three mil, three million four I'm talking about.
Okay, so it's not a reversal, it's a reduction in the capital projects fund expenditure budget.
We're not going to spend as much, we're saying we're going to spend less and leave it in the fund, but we're still going to transfer.
We're going to leave it in the fund.
Yes, sir, just not going to be.
But why do we have to approve anything if it's already in the budget that got approved?
The transfer, why do you have to approve the transfer?
Right.
Right, because it's a good practice, it's what's recommended, and then the auditors always ask if the board authorized the transfer. So and I, and the budget's complicated, it's easy for things to get lost, so for transparency purposes, I like the board to actually authorize the transfer.
Okay. To your point, sir, it's on line forty-five or column, uh, forty of the long range financial. Forecast, transfer in from general fund prior P O B money, three million dollars, in the long range financial forecast, in the budget, and then this is. To Gloria's point, best practice on a transfer of this size, give the board a chance to put a fingerprint on.
Okay, so that entry, I'm just wanted to make sure that it's not where we. Where we're. There's a reduction in the estimated loss. For the year.
Spent.
By three. That does not reflect in that adjustment.
Right. This this adjustment, sir, just says, we're not going to spend what we said we were going to spend because we're we're not moving forward with forty-one yet. And we're not going to spend that much money.
Right.
On forty-five and at the same time.
But eventually we will.
Yes, sir, and that money will stay in capital where it belongs for the future capital expense. Separate, break, break, second item. As budgeted, as outlined in long financial forecast, approve the transfer of additional three million dollars as we continue to build that capital fund for future.
So, but, but you had a bunch of other things, so, you know, changing that. I know you, how, part of how we got to the number saying, hey, we have the money to do it, was to, for example, take the money out of the rebate program or the, you know, the grant program, what do we call it? We're not actually asking to approve that, all we're asking is to approve a three million dollar transfer, right?
Correct, okay, yes, let's talk about that, I'm glad you asked that, okay. So the general fund expenditure budget as a whole, I think, is adequate for the rest of the fiscal year, to get through the fiscal year. So that's why I'm not recommending that the, an increase. However, part of that is because I don't think we're going to spend five hundred thousand dollars on the home hardening grant program. I projected that we, based on conversations with Chief Winnaker, that the plan is that we're going to spend.
Less than that.
Exactly.
But that's not what I agree, so that's my point is. I don't want to build this assumption. On that assumption, or this approval on that assumption, because I'm going to go work to make sure that we spend it.
Okay, so then.
Figure out how to, how to get the labor to do it, all that, but my objective is to actually make the community safer and spend that money that we already budgeted.
Okay. Okay, and so, also I hear that, and so then, so I won't. So I I'll have to bring this, I might, I'll have to, I'll go back and I'll check this. And potentially, if I do need a general fund expenditure budget adjustment, then I'll come back to the board for that.
Well, it says, it says we still have money left over if we do that, so it shouldn't be a problem. Right, it's not, it's not that close, like, this is my point.
Well, it is, well, it, I I used that savings, if you will. To cover the additional legal costs, additional, um, some other additional costs, repairs. That they, the fleet needed more money for fleet and so on, so. So we'll just see how it goes, because some, because this also, another thing with conservatively, how I project that basically every dollar. Of the operating expenses would be spent, and that's not realistic, that won't happen, but that's how we handle the mid-year review conservatively. So there'll be some savings in some other operating expenses, so I'll just monitor it, and if an adjustment's necessary, then I'll bring it back.
Are you asking for approval for the three million dollars and we're going to watch it going forward, or are you, or are you going to bring it back?
No, I, no, I need approval, I need approval for the capital projects expenditure budget adjustment is recommended. And for the uh authorized the operating transfer out of the general fund into the capital projects fund.
And and the biggest thing, of course, that we talked about a second ago, was that we're not going to spend two million dollars in the next four months on, or three months, on, four months, on. Station forty-five. So. There's no way we can do that. The the contractor couldn't spend it that fast. Unless you paid for all of it upfront and got a huge discount.
Yes, sir, we're, you're, you're absolutely correct, uh, although obviously that that goes back to capital. That we didn't, didn't want to come up short and have to come back for adjustment, given that with capital supposedly.
So do you want, fine, I'll I'll make a motion to approve the three million dollar transfer into the capital fund? Oh, sorry.
Let's open it for public comment, do you have public comment?
Uh, good evening, Jacob Rolla with uh local twelve thirty, uh, my question. To anyone who knows, I was just curious if there is. A uh station forty-one fully covered. Uh, nut there for nineteen million, is that subject to the T-bills also, are we going to incur interest? On restricted money that's in the capital fund?
Yes, all of the district's uh money is invested, includes, that's both general fund money as well as capital projects fund money.
It doesn't matter if it's restricted, unrestricted, it's going to earn a great interest rate for the time being. Even if it's already saved.
It always been.
Awesome, thank you.
Uh, speaking of which, I noticed that there's two point six million dollars in a Chase account. That has a zero interest rate. Is that just short-term to pay salaries or something that?
Right, so the the district has two accounts at Chase, we have a payroll account, and then our general operating account is at Chase Bank. And so the two point six million, I think that was at December thirty-first, so that was right before payroll and at the end of the year. So that's why at the end of the month, we have more in there, because we have to fund payroll and so on, uh, other costs at the start of the next month.
We don't have any sort of a account that we draw from that earns interest. They pay us zero interest all the time?
Right, zero.
Even on a checking, I mean, I earn interest on my checking account, and and I only have, you know, a few dollars in it. Why don't, we have two point six million dollars now, and then why aren't we earning interest on it?
Because that's how it's structured, we did an RFP when we selected the bank, and so that's what was, um, that was the, I got, you know, there were different bids. Um, but that was part of it, is that there's, there's no, that there was an interest on the checking accounts.
So do we minimize the amount of money we leave with them then, because, you know, at five percent, it it used to be uninteresting. I agree, you know, when interest rates were a quarter of a percent or something, it was totally uninteresting, but it's pretty interesting now. Um, and so I. I don't know how often we redid our thing with Chase or whoever it is, but, you know, we ought to be earning, I mean. It's really simple to have an account that as you draw it, it draws, you know, you have an interesting account, the checks slide against it, and it. I mean, it's, it happens automatically, it's.
It might be worth a phone call and capital one to see if they can beat that.
Well, we already have a deal with it, yeah, we have a deal.
Had to do an RFP on that?
We have, yes, sir, and this was, this was, I mean, it, it just. Um. Government, small government banking is a fundamentally different animal than consumer banking. And by the time you get done with the full wraparound, this was the the most responsive and the best provider, we could run more RFPs, but again. Unlikely to change the outcome and and it does take time, that would. Be much better used.
We have one, another hand, we have a hand raised.
And it, oh, and and the money that you put in that account to account for payroll. You don't just leave it there, right, you just transfer it in when when you need it?
Exactly, right before the payroll, right?
Before, so it's.
Right before, like, the day before, or?
No, because it has to be, ADP requires it to be there a few days ahead of time, so usually payday is paid days on the tenth, sometimes it's on the, if the tenth is a weekend, then it's on the eighth or the ninth. So then we get it, right, within a week or so, because I like to hit it there because I obviously want to fund the payroll.
Sure, you don't want to bounce a check to your.
Exactly.
All right, should we take the public comment?
But it's a really predictable thing, right, I mean, payroll is a fixed number every month.
No, it varies each month. Right, over time as well as things.
Set up a regular transfer of what, of a comfortable amount every month and just make it automatic.
I've unmuted Jonathan Goodwin.
Go ahead, Jonathan.
Uh, good evening again, uh, I I just want to. Shift a little different topic, uh. I want to express concern about legal costs. Um. Forty, the bills for forty thousand dollars. Uh, to the end of last year on this uh writ of mandate. Situation, forty thousand dollars and it, you know, none of this had gone to a judge yet. Um, and now it is going to a judge and. I expect that's where the real money starts getting spent. You know, and if you guys lose, which some people consider pretty likely. Then you're covering, of course, the, that's part of the deal, you're covering the expenses of the other party. Um, there was a hundred thousand. Um, there was a hundred thousand dollars paid out a few months ago to, in an employment situation where, um, the district's policies didn't quite match the law, as I read about it. Um, the Saint Mary's now, you guys probably, some of you might remember the very first piece of apparatus with a, uh, aerial capability, um, that the district had. At station forty-one was called the Spirit of Saint Mary's because Saint Mary's paid for it. Yes. They're probably thinking now they're not paying for any more of your equipment. Um, you got a possible lawsuit coming in there and who's next? So I mean, it's, it's just a general concern. I, I think at some point, maybe the board ought to, uh, take, you know, take a look at how all this money is being spent on lawsuits. And I might suggest that if you don't, someone running in an election against, uh, you know, for, for a seat on the board might do that. I, um, it might be, uh, interesting to see how all this, you know, it's a lot of money getting, um, moved around. I mean, the, the, the rid of mandate, I think will be a significant amount of money and, um, who knows what's, you know, I mean, if you, I'm just, I'm just asking you to keep your eyes on the road regarding this.
Thank you, Jonathan. We, we are, I can assure you. As the attorney on this board, I share your concerns. Uh, do we have any other public comment?
Okay, then I move that we approve the three million dollar transfer from the general fund into the capital fund.
I'll second if it's appropriate for the president to second. I, no, yeah, go ahead.
Director, just want to clarify that the, the capital, there are two, two things here recommended. One was, uh, making the adjustment to capital fund expenditures and the other is the operating transfer. And, and do you want to clarify what is being moved in, in pass?
You want to amend your motion or should?
When you say that, operating transfer, meaning that we're not going to spend the five point eight and we're going to spend the two? Or whatever the number was.
Right, adjusting three point seven that we're not going to spend and, and then secondarily, taking an adjustment of three, three million into capital for the, the two item.
Well, I don't think we're adjusting, uh, it looks to me like the two numbers that we're changing are five point, we're not going to spend five point eight and we're going to spend two instead, which is three point eight. And because they have the numbers rounding over the whole bunch of other numbers in it. So are we, are we actually approving a new budget? It sounds like that's what you're asking for.
Before we make this, as looking at the, when we get to nine one. And we're looking at the.
We are at nine one. Right? This is nine one.
Well, then, look at the statement on the capital fund. These transactions are not reflected in here in terms of the adjusted budget. The three million is in there. But I don't see the reversal of the three million. Or.
Seven.
Seven.
Right. Okay. So if you look at the attachment with the capital projects fund, statement of revenues and expenditures.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
Right. So the bud, so if you look at the expenditures part, the capital projects fund budget for expenditures is ten million, seven hundred seventy thousand, two hundred sixty-three dollars. Do you see that amount for the budget?
Yes.
Okay. And so if you go to the next column to the right, that's how much I project we're really going to spend, which is six million, nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. So then if you go to that next column to the right, the last column on the right, that's the amount, the three million, seven nine four, nine hundred six dollars. That's the adjustment I'm recommending that we decrease the expenditure budget by that amount because we're not going to spend that money in this fiscal year.
And that's what I took exception to. Why do we need to change that?
We don't if the board doesn't want to.
So at the end of the year, you're projecting that you, a six million dollar balance in the capital fund.
Correct.
Well, so may, maybe another way to think about it. I'm fine with approving the two million dollars, even though I don't think we're going to spend it. So we don't have to worry about being able to commit to it for the station forty-five. I'm happy to take out the station forty-one because I'm sure we're not going to spend that. And I'm happy to approve the three million dollar transfer, those three items, which make up a vast majority of all the things that are changing. But I would like to limit what I would approve to that. Does that make sense or is that unworkable?
That's fine. If that's what the majority of the board wants to do, sure.
I just think that, boys, we're, we're approving a different budget basically. And I don't think we spend enough time personally to go through and modify each one of the line items in the budget. So I'll make a motion then we can see if.
Well, we already have a motion on the floor, right?
Okay.
We do have a motion on the floor.
But it wasn't, we, we.
Well, I seconded it. So I, do we technically have to withdraw the motion?
I, I think you could do a friendly amendment. Um, so, uh, okay. Cause I think he would accept what he just amended his own proposal to be.
Right. So I would, I would amend mine to say that I want, I'll approve the three million dollar transfer. I'll move, approve the reduction of the budget for the station forty-one to five point eight million and the increase in the budget by the two million dollars for the station forty-five. Those three things.
I'm not sure we need another second, but just for, for fun.
Okay. Director, you have seconds of motion. Then do we need public comment again or we go to roll call?
We do need public comment again.
We're changing our procedures. We didn't.
Do we have public comment?
We do. I, I am checking my, um, mouse is, is proving to be a little difficult this evening. And so we do not have any hands raised and we do not have any public comment.
Then we can take the roll call.
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Hasler.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jordan.
Hi.
President Romer.
Hi.
Moving on, agenda item nine point two, to determine the amount of the O P E B trust contributions and the amount of the pension rate stabilization trust contribution for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and authorize the transfer of district fund to complete the trust contributions.
The general fund budget includes five hundred forty-three thousand dollars for an O P E B contribution. The most recent actuarial evaluation calculated a trust contribution of four hundred sixty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars. For a pension trust contribution, the budget includes one million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, two hundred seventy-nine dollars. The amount and timing of both contributions are subject to board authority. Staff recommends the board determine the amount of the O P E B trust contribution and the amount of the pension trust contribution and authorize transfer of district funds in for the trust contributions.
Real public comment?
Uh, board discussion?
Well, um, just in reading this report, I would, uh, I would be in favor of, uh, the O P E B trust contribution, uh, being the actuarial uh, valuation report amount of four sixty-three, five fifty-three. And I would keep the pension rate stabilization as budgeted.
As budgeted or as, as the new calculation?
Well, for, for pension rate of the one million, five sixty-nine, two seventy-nine.
Is, is that a new number?
No, so the O P E B hat gets a new number, an updated number based on the O P E B actuarial evaluation. But for the pension trust contribution, there's no update to that number. So that amount is still the same.
So I agree with you now.
Shall we open public comment?
Sure.
We do not have any hands raised or public comment.
Then I believe that we approve, uh, item nine point two with the proposed O P E B and pension rate stabilization numbers that were proposed.
I say I got the motion.
Public comment?
We do not have any hands raised or any public comment.
Let's have a roll call.
Director Dan Ziger.
Hi.
Director Hasler.
Hi.
Director Jex.
Hi.
Director Jorgens. President Romer.
Hi.
Agenda item nine point three, the first reading and introduction of ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one. An ordinance of the Maragorinda Fire Protection District of Contra Costa County revising a schedule of fees for district services and superseding ordinance number twenty-three dash zero two, as amended pursuant to board direction.
Even directors, at the January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four board meeting, the board considered revising the schedule fees for district services. Staff presented the proposed revised fees using the Consumer Price Index of two point eight percent, which the district has historically used to annually increase fees. The board directed staff to revise the fee schedule using the most recent salary increase of five percent. The proposed fees reflect a five percent increase. Twelve additional fees have been added for services related to processing hydrant and fire service forms, plan reviews and inspections for energy storage systems. And plan reviews and inspections for solar photovoltaic power systems, environmental review services and insurance property compliance inspection. These twelve additional fees are identified below. I would note that this is, uh, the environmental review uh, is related to the work we did with the inaction of ordinance twenty-three oh eight. Making these resources available via the district for residents who want more information uh, about, um, the, the manner in which they could carry out few reduction measures. Also, uh, as a cleanup, we, um, as, as I think I'm, have been the, the lead, um, culprit here. Um, historically, we've used false alarms, um, interchangeably with nuisance alarms. As a reminder, the nuisance alarm is one where it is a failure of the system or a false alarm is a deliberate activation of the system by an occupant or a person who otherwise has access to it. Um, we noted that while we were often, uh, we were responding to a mix of nuisance and, uh, false alarms. Our fee schedule only recognized false alarms. That was due to the informal historical use of the term in a manner that was more encompassing. I was more precise with my terms in a manner that outpaced our fee schedule. We recommend changing the fee schedule to reflect our practice, which is, uh, irregardless of whether, whether it is a nuisance or a false alarm, repeated alarms warrant a fee. We recommend the board introduce and waive the reading of ordinance twenty-four oh one, which included as attachment A. An ordinance of the Maragorinda Fire Protection District revising scheduled fees for district services and superseding ordinance number twenty-three dash zero two, to be effective April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
So how many nuisance fees are going to, or how many of these two categories of alarms are they going to be till you start finding them?
Uh, that remains unchanged, sir. Um, a fire marshal just dropped off. I, I don't remember what the trigger is for. Uh, but there are, there are a number of, of times and then it ramps up with that increase. But that's unchanged from our current practices. It's just clarifying terms. I, I would note we have, but we, we previously had several, um, entities that had repeated false and nuisance alarms. Once we began filling, uh, file. By now. Levying fees for those responses. Uh, that is dropped off. Now we have the, the one which is Saint Mary's, which we continue to work with on there. But the other, um, facilities that had significant numbers corrected those quickly and are no longer on the, no longer generating fees.
Cause this happens for individual homes too, I think.
Uh, we've never had a case of a individual home.
Meaning never find somebody, but you've had false alarms.
We definitely have had false nuisance alarms, but this isn't, uh, you get a number of runs before there starts to be a, a fee involved. And we've never had an incident with a, a residential system bringing that. It's also that, those are per month. So you have to have a lot of them.
Okay.
Theater Square was the, the other primary driver and they made some corrections to their alarm system and haven't had one in quite a while.
Good. Okay, great.
Hey, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Um, I have some questions on the, uh, the solar fees. So, um, I just wanted some further explanation. I have some questions. So I wrote down a few questions. So you, I'll just read them all to you, then you can answer them for me. Um, these are new fees. Um, are these solar fees duplicate of what the county already does? Cause I know they, thinking from experience, when I put mine in a while back. Um, and it's been a long time. It's been over a dozen years, but I went, I had to get county, uh, review. I don't remember getting, you should have, oh, okay. Okay, so.
Maybe I can do them retroactive.
Okay, but what I want to know is, what I want to know is, is this, so my question is, even back twelve years ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what I want to know, maybe I did, maybe I did. But anyway, are these fees duplicate of county? What do you, what does M O F D, um, do that the county doesn't do?
We enforce the fire codes.
Was that?
We enforce the fire code. They enforce the building code.
Building code, grid fire code.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and there's no way, or the county never enforces the fire code?
They're not, they're not the fire code official. They can't.
And so on these, on these fees, um, for solar, for us, are you saying we never had these fees before?
No, sir. We've had them. They've just been under different categories. As we've seen an increased number of these inspections before, they were miscellaneous or planned review. That led to confusion and uncertainty. And so people were paying for the review and the inspection that is required and making corrections when they were non-compliant, which happens a lot, specifically around firefighter safety. When panels are installed in a manner that doesn't ru, leave any room for a firefighter to safely access the roof and to make a ventilation hole, as we require a perimeter, uh, so we can move around the roof safely.
And that became an issue recently, didn't it?
Absolutely. Uh, and so that, that requires a planned review and then an inspection. We've always charged for that. It's just kind of under miscellaneous. This was breaking it out, be more specific.
Okay.
So that as a resident looks at the menu of fees, they understand what they're.
Okay, so that was, I guess that was my question. If these aren't brand new fees, they've been there. We're just clarifying what.
Yes, sir. We, we often, so this, and it's one of the many emerging things. Uh, we saw this with hydrogen not too terribly long ago. We, we have always, if you come to us with a plan for review, there's a fee associated with that because a staff member spends time and we, these are intended to recoup the cost of providing that service. As things are, are early in their lifespan, there is not generally a dedicated fee for them because there are a lot of them and come in saying, you're going to have a tricycle repair shop. It's not something we have a fee for, but we still charge for review of the permit. And as we start to see more and more of those, we, we add them. This one is probably well past due and it should have been added based on the popularity of solar voltic systems. Uh, but this was, um, for mention, fire marshal's assessment of, of where they were seeing enough new activity that it justified a dedicated.
Okay.
So I'm just, just go back to my case for a minute. If I paid county fees, I, I would have paid local fees too. Does the county coordinate with you? And I could have, I could have just paid county fees and I don't know.
County continues to be exceptionally uncooperative, ensuring residents are aware that they need a fire, a fire code review and a fire department permit. That includes violating state law, state law in an egregious manner that requires that any home in a wildland urban interface uh, fire area or any home that is in a fire hazard severity zone, it must have an exterior defensible space of forty-two ninety-one or government code five seven seven eight two or a local jurisdiction's ordinances which need to receive state standards. Those must be signed off before the permit is filed by state law. County takes the position that they don't do that. It's not their responsibility to ensure that the homeowner has that done and they're signing those permits. That's a violation of state law. We haven't, we don't have the ability to post up a fire prevention member at county building department or the, the plants counter here to ensure everyone is aware they have to come see us. We rely on residents either to figure that out or for the county who is issuing the building permit to inform them via stamp.
Yeah, that's what they do on building.
Or their contractor, you know.
Right. But in the absence of people being told and with counties signing off permits in violation of state law, there's not a lot of incentive on, on the residents or the contractor to go make sure they got all the signatures they need. That results in, uh, just last week, having to inform a resident who had a long overdue permit and installed sprinklers without a permit, without our inspections, that they needed to tear out the walls. Uh, because those sealed up sprinklers could not be inspected because they're now behind drywall. They were not very happy about that.
Yeah.
Right? Had they not proceeded with sealing up the walls without a fire department sign off on their permit card, that never would have happened.
Okay, better in their contract.
I, I suspect that, that conversation.
Okay. I clarified, I think.
Yes, sir. So are you looking, do we need to have public comment?
We do need to have public comment.
Oh, we have one.
Uh, good evening once more. Uh, I did want to say a word about this. I find it a little bit of a concern. I find it a little bit of a concern, both the, uh, the problems that the chief mentioned and also, well, you know, the problems when these things go up and it does not allow for ventilation, because people are trying to maximize the amount of, you know, power they can get from the space they have, which is understandable, but you know, possibly in complete ignorance of the larger situation. And it used to be in ages past that the district had tools of communication with the community, community being a general term, you know, the, the population served. And, um, I don't know that there is that on, I mean, you know, they used to mail out lossy annual reports every, you know, five years, and it was not something I'd recommend doing now, but some kind of method of communicating with, um, with the citizens of, yeah, there's a lot happening and in some sense. Um, I think updates of some sort or another that, you know, where people, you know, either, you know, you put out a mailer and say, if you wanna learn about these things, uh, you know, go to this website and sign up or something along these lines. Um, uh, this, you know, some of this stuff is important and shouldn't just be left to chance that people, you know, find out the hard ways. I just wanna, I mean, I know that's not exactly what you're voting on here, but it sounds like a pertinent comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that we approve nine point three.
Well, do we have any other public comment?
We do not have any more hands raised.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I, I move that we approve nine point three as stated.
I see at the motion.
Comment?
We do not have any public comments on the motion.
Roll call please.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Hassler?
Aye.
Director Jex?
Aye.
Director Jorgens? President Romer?
Aye.
Agenda item nine point four, resolution twenty-four point oh three, a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Moraga Renda Fire Protection District, nominating a director as a representative of special districts on the Contra Costa Local Agency Formation Commission. Shall we discuss that, please?
Even directors, the Contra Costa County Laffco Commission consists of two city members, two county members, two special districts, one public member and alternate member in each category. Alternates generally attend commission meetings, participate in deliberations and vote when a regular member in their category is absent or excused from voting. District receives correspondence advising all independent special districts of an upcoming election for special district, the regular, not alternate seat on Contra Costa Laffco. Uh, Mike McGill's term will expire on May sixth, twenty twenty-four. The term is for four years. Each con, each candidate for this position must be nominated by a special district board using the attached resolution, should they be interested. I, I would note, uh, the district has no obligation to nominate a director and we have no pending business before Laffco at this time.
Well, I would, I would pass up the opportunity to do so, but I would defer to anybody else on the board who would be interested in going.
No, and especially since, uh, Commissioner Mc- McGill will seek reappointment, so.
Oh, is that a fact?
So, yeah.
Okay.
I don't want it, so.
Nope.
Are you interested?
No.
No, okay.
Okay, and so we have public comment?
Yeah, I, I don't blame any of you guys for running the other way, but just a point of interest, I wanna mention that, uh, it happens every now and then that the county, uh, fire agency runs perilously low on money and they look for ways of, uh, absorbing other resources, if you know what I'm trying to say. And, um, that has happened. Uh, they did a municipal service, they, they do a municipal service review, it's their big document every so many years. And, uh, there was a time when, um, they were considering, well, you know, they, they did consolidate some other small agencies, but not so much the profitable ones. And, um, so I'm just saying that to make a point that it is worth at least looking at their agendas and, you know, keeping, uh, keeping some, uh, uh, some, you know, finger on some distant pulse of theirs, because it, it's not immaterial. It's not, uh, it, it can get to the point of really being serious. Thank you.
That's why Director Danziger is our representative to attend their meetings.
And I trust, I trust him implicitly to monitor and protect our interest in his role in doing so. Any other public comment?
We do not have any more hands raised.
It doesn't look like anybody wants to do this, so.
So we don't need a motion and we can proceed to nine point, uh, five. Adopt resolution twenty-four point oh three, revising the rules of procedure for board meetings, addressing voting requirements, rules for public comment, removal of the board officer positions of secretary treasurer, and adding disruptive conduct procedures. Do you have staff present, uh?
Yeah.
Attorney representatives?
Yes. Um, I'll present on this. Um, so, uh, first of all, this is the second time, uh, these amendments are in front of you, and I'll just say it upfront, we, uh, depending on how many changes we make tonight, we, we may want to get instruction from you and take this back and bring it again, uh, the following month. But if, if there aren't that many changes, then maybe we'll proceed, uh, to recommend adoption. Uh, but it is on for adoption in any event. Um, so I've handed out, and there's also the public outside, uh, a new attachment. I believe you guys all have a copy of it. Um, the, the new, uh, the new version has changes, some of which are responsive to, oh, there you go, these are, uh, the only changes that you see on this version that Marcia's handing out are changes on top of the changes of what's in the agenda. Uh, so in other words, it's the agenda packet plus these changes. And so, uh, I, I'm gonna take you through these very briefly. Uh, a number of these are in, um, uh, have to, uh, are responses to various members, uh, suggestions. There are a number of suggestions that have been made, some of which, uh, uh, I've put in here and others of which I think you may want to debate. But let me go through the ones that I put in here first, and then we can talk about the ones, uh, to debate. Um, some of these changes in this version I've just handed out are really, are really just clerical. The, uh, the major changes are the following, uh, section two point five, public hearings, um, on, th- that are not quasi judicial in nature. Uh, we struck testimony by proponents, opponents, and rebuttal by proponents. The reason is because th- the hearings you're talking about that are not quasi judicial are hearings that are generally required by the fire code for such things as fee schedules, et cetera. And so you don't have exactly a proponent in these non- quasi judicial, uh, settings. You've got, th- these are, these are proposals that are coming from staff, and so we just, we just cleaned that up. Um, the, uh, in the decorum section, which is, uh, where four point four and four point five are sections that deal with disruptive activities, uh, we, we had omitted to strike one paragraph that we should have struck that, uh, uh, contains language that would probably, uh, be a problem, uh, constitutionally, uh, including any person making impertinent or slanderous remarks or who becomes boisterous, uh, can be expelled. That's, uh, a little problematic, so in modern times, so.
Bigness issue, maybe?
Yes, uh, although, uh, I, 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 I thought about striking this because Jonathan is on the line and I thought, eh, maybe not. Maybe we should keep that in. So, uh, anyway, we struck that out. Uh, the, um, we also added a site to a relatively new government code section, five four nine five seven point nine five, yet, yet another addition to, uh, the Brown Act that specifically addresses.
Where's that?
Uh, this is in.
Page ten?
It's page ten, yes, right close to the top, uh, under A.
Five four nine five seven point nine five.
Yes, nine five, which is, um, which was enacted, uh, really to deal with this kind of disruptive, uh, potential behavior and is, is, was enacted in, uh, about a year ago. Um, so, um, uh, those are the major changes there. Uh, we changed, uh, Rosenberg's Rules of Order to Robert's Rules of Order. You'll recall that at the last session.
I thought it was the other way around.
No, we, we had wanted, we, I had wanted to switch it to Rosenberg's rules because they're simpler, but, uh, Director Jorgens had a strong objection to, uh, doing that. And so, uh, again, it's your call, not mine, but I, I, I'm now, I, I've switched it here, of course, you, you.
So we're back to Robert's.
We're back to Robert's rules.
That's fine with me.
Uh, the, uh, um, these other changes are really just clerical, um, until you get to page nineteen. Um, on page nineteen, there are two changes that were made, uh, at the request of Director Danziger. Um, the first one, uh, is, um, a little bit of elaboration on, uh, the appointment of committees, uh, and who, who appoints, which makes sense, that we should have that in there. Uh, and, um, the, the second is a, a new section, which could be section thirteen, on, uh, board attendance, which basically says that people are expected to, um, to attend, uh, et cetera, and if they're not, it sort of specifies procedures. And then at the very end of that, uh, two directors had raised the question about what about vacancies? So, uh, board vacancies, so I, I simply tacked that onto the end of, of the absence section. Hang on, let me just finish this one thing, uh, by citing, uh, board vacancies are filled, uh, under, uh, it's actually Health and Safety Code one three five, one three eight five two B, which then refers back to government code seventeen eighty, which is a fairly elaborate process of how vacancies are filled that depends on whether you've served for more than a hundred and thirty days or less than a hundred and thirty days, and there's a variety of differences.
So there's actually a, a law about this?
There is, there's a law, and it's, it's in the, specifically in the fire district law. So it's, it's, it's actually specific to fire districts.
And so what, cause last time I think there was one of these, it was the board that chose who was gonna be the member.
There, depending on the circumstance, how much is left on the term, et cetera. Uh, you, you, in some circumstances under, so what, what one three eight five two B does is it, it takes you back to government code section seventeen eighty. Seventeen eighty covers a lot of places, not just us, it's elected positions generally. And so it's, if you, if you've served less than half a term, then you, then there, there's a process for temporary appointment and then an election, essentially. But then if you, it depends on when the general election is, et cetera. It's a long section and goes on with all kinds of different possibilities, if this, then that, et cetera. Uh, in any event, it's not optional, it's, it's, it, this is the law about how you fill vacancies.
Right? So I, I think twelve, out of twelve, the way it's currently written, it's a whole redundant, I think. We could clean out the language a little bit. Yeah, literally twelve. It says that just the board may appoint such standing after committees that are necessary to conduct business. And then you added, and to keep informed of matters of the district, and then again says, the board shall.
No, no, this is appoint and remove members, uh, or, so you've got two different issues. One is creating the committees and the other is, uh.
We'll just say, appoint committees and their members.
Yeah, it's actually create committees and appoint members.
Right, but I, all I'm saying is you could say that in a lot fewer words.
Sure.
You could say appoint committees and their members.
Totally, absolutely, you could do. Uh, that sounds better, uh, I can, we can make that, we can make that change. Um, uh, the district, uh, director so assigned several reports to the board on matters. All these committees came from Director Danziger.
Right, no, I, I, I agree with the concept, I think the wording could get cleaned up a little bit.
There was nothing in it prior about, about this, so I just thought.
No, that's good, I, I like, I like, I think almost all, all the comments.
So, so, uh, there are a few other comments, uh, that we need to go through. Uh, one has to do with the question of when the packet comes out. And so the two things from, these came originally from, uh, uh, Director Jorgens. Uh, one was we had, I think, dropped some language about including documentation, et cetera. And so the suggestion was that that be restored. I don't think there's any objection on the staff side to that, so I think we would do that.
The, the question was, the, it was dropped through the practice was things such as, uh, the PowerPoints and, and the, the operations report are not typically included in the packet. That ensures that they're fresh and they account for things that have happened from when the board was public, packet was published. A, a plain reading of it previously said that that would suggest that would need to be included. So the, the striking of that language was to reflect that staff reports and the, the bulk of material would be included, but presentations would not necessarily be included in the packet. They would be presented and included in the minutes, uh, following the.
But I, I guess my intent would be so we, we could say that the thing is, the things you just mentioned that are somewhat live, we can make an exception for those things, but in general, we ought to. And, and I, again, you know, getting, this one was short, relatively speaking. Sometimes they're four or five hundred pages.
Yes, sir.
And, and, uh, you know, some of that has to be available ahead of time, because you can create four or five hundred pages in a couple of days. So if possible, it doesn't have to be, you know, send things out a little earlier if we can.
Yes, sir, understood. I, I think Mary's report's a great example, though, that we regularly receive payments day of the board meeting that are included, that if we, if that material was included on either a Friday or a Wednesday, sometimes multimillion dollar payments would not, would not come before the board for, until the following month, so making it essentially a five week delay, uh, as an example where there's a practical impact of, of being able to share.
I'm, I'm fine with all that, but, you know, when we get things that are available before that Friday would be helpful to me anyway, firstly, if their volume is.
Yes, sir.
Send them out.
But I, 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 so I'm assuming the understanding, though, is, is it's the doc- documents that are normally attached. It's not the presentations, we haven't normally attached the.
We sometimes. Oh, we have sometimes when we get things at a time.
That's our, just concern about the language.
We've gotten some presenting, you know, the things we get from outsiders and stuff, we do include those, so.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting.
When possible, how's that, you know?
Yes.
Just put a when possible in.
Okay, that's, okay, and then the, the other question was Wednesday versus Friday, uh, and, uh, for the package.
Yeah, I had, I had, I mean, I know that came up and I had some language I thought maybe we could use for that. Um, I, I, I think it would put undue burden on, on, uh, on staff to, to do it by Wednesday and I've, in the time that I've been on the board, um, over five years now, I, I, maybe once or twice I had difficulty getting through it by, by the meeting, but I thought maybe if we put something along this lines, I mean, I, I just wrote it down, uh, but something along the lines of, uh, agenda publication and distribution shall be done as early at the close of business on Wednesday preceding the regular scheduled board meeting and no later than the close of business on Friday. So it would enable us to do it.
Yeah, I think that's actually very similar to the thing we just discussed, though. I mean, I, we can leave it formally Friday for all I care.
Okay.
That language works too. It's just that when possible, send part of it out ahead of time if you can, instead of.
Can you do that? Can you send?
It, we, we take as much time as we have.
Yeah.
To get the packet out, i- if, if it needs to be out on Wednesday, if things will shift to the left, it, it's, and it, it, the, the concern ultimately is, and I think to Director Jorgens' point, we will endeavor to get it out earlier. We do most weeks, uh, Marcia is usually hard and fast, things need to hurt.
But you're thinking of it as a thing, why can't we send out part of it or?
We have to publish the package. Really? If we, if we dribble it out, then, then, every time it gets touched, it, it's hard. Uh, and as we start publishing things, we, we now have to, to republish them and it's confusing. I also think it's inconsistent with transparency of the public, because it's a lot easier to dismiss or bring it control. So to Director Danziger's point, uh, we endeavor to get it out early. Um, the concern becomes if it goes out on Wednesday and something significant happens on Thursday or Friday, it's, it's a lot harder to pull it back, adjust it and issue an amended packet. It, it's also means that the time that it takes to put the packet out was just amplified by the number of times it was touched. That said, there are, every month we try to get it out by Wednesday and then usually before Friday.
So there aren't things you can send to the directors other than the packet?
We, we can, we can communicate with directors outside of the packet, understanding that those could be requested via PRA, uh, but they would be included in the packets and transparency is included. Uh, but once again, it, it just, it, it comes to a matter of, these things take time, uh, and that, that time is, there's a lot of competing demands and the sooner, anytime we touch it multiple times, we, we amplify the impact of that particular document.
Maybe we just leave it like it is and sometimes you get it out earlier.
I, I, I mean, I, I just have to say, uh, uh, I'm not the people who have to get this thing out, but you know, I, I, I have to say. A huge amount of work goes into getting this package.
Right.
It 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 occupies solid, even of my time, a few days, and I can only imagine what it does for Marsha and the rest of staff. Um, so and and Marsha tries very, very hard to get this, I mean, she really puts a lot of pressure on everybody to get stuff in, et cetera. I mean, appropriately, so uh, you know, and so. I would really argue this this process is not broke, and I'm just not sure.
Okay, I I hear, but well, here's an example, we we send out, once a year, we send out the Cessara reports, right?
Right.
That's something we get as an attachment, it isn't something we create, we don't spend three minutes doing anything with it, we just put a cover letter on it and send it out. It's probably a hundred pages all in itself, and I guarantee that ninety percent of the people on the board read no more than one page of that before it gets done. So it's a useless document to send out unless you have it long enough ahead of time to actually be able to process it. So part of what, and and I'm I'm gonna be a little overboard here for a second, but part of what happens is you send this stuff out. It it it's it's silly to think that people will actually read five hundred pages of documentation, this won't happen, okay? I guarantee you, hold everybody, it won't have read it all, at least increases the likelihood, and so for things that are. Huge documents like that, that we didn't have to process, why can't we send those things, and I'm happy to miss, you know, make it available to the public, it can't be that hard. But I don't think you have to make it available to the public anyway.
I guess the question would be, which documents do you, I mean, it's hard to know on face of it, which documents. I mean, sure, you're absolutely right, outside vendors, outside people often provide documents, you know, well in advance, there's no question about it, but but but. You know, how do we know, how are we to know which documents you really want to see at a time?
Just, so make it as easy as the ones you get from outside people that come as a package, i- if they're available on Wednesday, send them out, otherwise do it everything on Friday. It's real simple. But you know, the the problem for me is, so I'm supposed to be a good boarded, you know, board member, and I'm supposed to have read all this stuff. And so you're putting me in an awkward position, you know, so one of the chances, the choices is, gee, you put something forth, you give it to me on Friday, I haven't had a chance to read it, I vote no. And that's my standard vote, I'll just always vote no on everything, I haven't had a chance to read one. But that's not where I wanna go, and that's not where anybody else wants to go.
No, look, I understand, I mean, I have a feeling staff would say, look, if you want, it's it's far easier for them to just say, okay, it's Wednesday, not Friday. And then whatever you don't get in the packet, just stay there, or is old.
But it doesn't need to be every little single, it it's when we, you know, the Cessara documents are good.
Yes, sir, but this, I mean, I think the part that's missing is that in in isolation, any one of these things is small and it is simple, but. When it comes to compiling, and I'm sympathetic to having to read all those pages, but it I I I. Ask recognition that compiling them is is a dynamic element, involves not only the physical compiling, but getting them from a lot of people, then being. Reviewed, proofread, approved, et cetera, so that there's an awful lot of protections. So if the board's pleasure is to to John's point, if you need more time, which I understand. Wednesday to Wednesday is more time than Friday to Wednesday. Then we can commit to producing the packet on on Wednesday, but that does mean that things that come in on Thursday and Friday are not going to be included in the packet. Now, that doesn't happen off, and 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 this is the problem that we're trying to come up with absolutes, and there is a lot of variation. But what we what we can't do is dribble it out or reissue it, because then we we take what's already a pretty significant. Consumer of available staff resources and we we amplify, but if, I mean, as I said, I I. I I have to read it, but I'm sitting in the office all day, so I I.
And the other way to think about it is, so you guys get to, you you put it out on Friday, and then you go home and have a nice weekend. And you're putting the burden on us to read it all in three days.
Yes, sir, we can, if the board's pleasure, we can.
I'm just saying, it's, you know.
We can issue, we can issue on Wednesday if if more time, I just, I wanna be clear about the trade off.
I think we have to depend upon the staff for a lot of the details, I mean, I appreciate getting budgetary stuff ahead of time to let me absorb it, because. That's not my area of expertise, but I, again, I, you know, you, we can't each individually do all this stuff alone, I, you know. I defer to Director Hassler and Director Judds on a lot of the budget and Director Jorgens on the budgetary stuff. I'm fine with getting the stuff on Friday afternoon, I'd rather be, have it be inclusive. You know, I'm already spending my weekends reading this stuff anyway, and I'm prepared to continue to do that so long as I'm on the board. You know, we just ask for your best efforts, uh, you know, but.
But I don't, but that's not, that's not what you're voting on, you're voting on Friday, no best efforts, it's just Friday, that's what they said. They didn't say we'll do anything different, it's only Friday is it voting.
I I'm sen- I'm sensitive to the to putting the pressure on them to have it by Wednesday.
Well, I I think it's two different issues, right, and so is. There's what we will endeavor to do and what what we are directed to do, and it would be helpful to understand what we're directed to do, we'll build around. But to Director Jordan's point, if if we're endeavoring to issue it on Wednesday. Then we have, we reverse the awkwardness, now I'm making a judgment call about whether things that came in on Thursday or Friday were important enough to be included. And and that's highly subjected based on your comfort, uh, familiarity with the topic, uh, how controversial it is. Cessara publishes a lot of stuff, um, that may or may not be particularly relevant page by page with great detail. As a judgment call that I can't make, because I'm I'm not a director reading, so. It would be helpful to understand in in absolutes what the board's preference is with regard to when we publish, and then we will, we will meet that. And if we can get it out sooner, we will endeavor to do so, uh, understanding that there's almost too much we can back it off.
Do we want, do you have a strong opinion as to time and date?
I I've been okay with Friday, but I could see, you know, some language that says. As early as possible, no later than Friday, or.
That's not, that's not very helpful.
And again, I I guess it's still going out as a zero or a one. The other alternative is.
I am too, I am too.
Just say, you know what, if you wanna know about it, it's on our website. Uh, and just don't send out, don't send out four hundred pages of anything ever.
We're required to publish the package, or any make hard copies available and post.
But where does it say that you have to give out this Cessara report, is that a law someplace? Nope.
Not unless it's on the agenda.
Guaranteed, well, but. So what I'm saying is, but it, there are, but maybe that's, that and and the financial forecast. You know, the long range, the draft of the financial forecast, we worked on it for six months.
Can can we get it, can we get input from Director Hassler? Greg, are you on, and do you have the?
Yep, I'm on.
Do you have a strong, uh, do you have a strong opinion as to when you would like to have the packet by?
I I, well, I personally think Friday is fine because it gives me the weekend to look at it. Um, and but I, it it's a long packet, I'm just saying for somebody who works, it is a long packet to get through, whether I had. Two weeks or.
Yeah.
Two days.
One that works, and you're willing to do it at five P M.
Okay, and over the weekend.
I think if they, if the target is Wednesday. But if there's reasons to hold it to Friday, I mean. It's fine with me.
Okay, I'll stop. Okay, so I'm 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 hearing with the language as is.
Yep, that's it.
Right.
That's fine.
Okay, and the other part on this one was, we've we've already made the change from uh, uh, back to Roberts, Rosenberg's. Um, so there were a few other things that were proposed, uh, uh, the uh, I don't know whether. I I spoke to Director Danziger today about a proposal about adding. Uh, allowing the addition of a couple of minutes of time uh, upon request. And and I told him that I thought that was a bad idea, because this was, it was discretionary, right? So if you wanna, if you wanna give everybody five minutes, I'm okay with it, but 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 if you wanna give people three and then say, we'll decide whether we're gonna give you more. I worry about what's the criteria under where we're, we're deciding on the two, so.
But as a practical matter, sometimes we do let people go overboard anyway, we just don't have to put it in writing, right?
That's right, exactly, but and you can exercise your discretion, the chair can always exercise, you know.
And 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 I'm totally subject to anybody telling me that I need to do things differ, it's subjective, both formal and formal suggestions from group.
Are there other items?
Yeah, I have just a couple, sure.
Go ahead.
So under, and and I'm, I'm just not sure how specific we have to get, but under, right on the first page, under one point one.
Yeah.
I mean, it states that um, closed sessions begin at six o'clock.
Yeah.
Today we started at five, so maybe we don't, we could just say, we don't even need to put that, right?
No, you don't.
Uh, I agree.
Yeah, I I'll I'll find a way to, cause yeah, that is a problem, because it means that it's not a regular session.
Begin as, begin as they are described on the agenda, I don't know.
Yeah. All right, I'll I'll, we'll figure out a way to.
Can I, and and I wanna go through a few other things, um, but I I really did, I I talked to you today about it, and then. I really wanted you to explain seven point seven, because I'm I'm really not clear. I I think I know what that applies to, but I wanna make sure I just still understand the words, the word.
Yeah, give me one second, I have a written.
And I know it's been there before, and I've been on the board five years.
Motion to table.
Yeah.
Table, so.
I don't recall ever using that at all, but I just wanna know.
So here's from Rosenberg's, uh.
Okay.
A uh, motion to table, this motion, if passed, requires discussion of the agenda item to be halted. Uh, and the agenda item to be placed on hold, so in other words, it takes precedence over other other things. So a person makes a motion to table, we've had this discussion a couple of times.
It's actually happened.
Yes, actually, it happened, exactly.
And that just temporarily mean?
Uh, well, it's temporarily until somebody puts it back on the agenda at a subsequent uh, subsequent meeting, and then of course it can come back. The motion can contain specific time uh, in which the item comes back, uh, or not. Um, as in, I moved, we table the item until our regular meeting in October. Uh, or the motion can contain no specific time for the return of the item, in which case, a motion to take the item off the table. And bring it back to the body will have to be made at a future meeting, so that can happen.
But but I think in, to sort of say what practically happens, which if if Roberts talks about this, you know. If you say, i- i- it's the process that actually happens live, if somebody says, I moved that we table this. There can be no discussion about it, it literally has to go a vote immediately after they say those words, no discussion, it can get voted down.
Yeah.
Fine, but you can't, it notes no public comment, there's no nothing, no discussion in the board. It's literally if somebody says, I moved to retable this, there has to be an immediate vote, and you either go forward or don't.
Does it get a second and a vote of the whole?
It does require a second.
It does require, yeah.
So it's a regular vote.
Yeah, as majority, uh, so essentially. I mean, it comes up the most when people disagree with the president, with the chair. Uh, so chair puts it, puts it out, or 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 staff for that matter, and and somebody just says, no, we don't wanna debate this, basically, we're, we wanna put it off. And it does supersede all other, all other motions.
Right.
It's odd that it doesn't allow any debate.
Yeah, it's a.
You can debate it after, I mean, if it doesn't pass, then it is gonna get.
And then it is.
Right, or at least, or or unless somebody passes, I guess, it's a different motion, you know, bring it back in twenty minutes or something, you can do it any way you want.
Okay, I I understand it.
All right.
I just.
Yeah, I I will say, it's it's a somewhat arcane motion, but it did come up actually uh, uh, in at least one session with.
Board, yep.
Uh, a a few other, just a few other questions and things, um, I I know, um. You brought this up about um, agenda items. And having an actual procedure, you know, we, I've talked to President Romer about agenda items, and I told him if I had some. Other than talking about it at the meeting, I would let you know.
I think the process is supposed to be that you put them on at the end of the prior meeting. Or or, and I would argue you can put them on at the end or in the middle of the prior meeting, because we often, you know, in the middle of discussing something, you say, let's put that on the next agenda. Doesn't seem to mean we should have to then re.
That's right.
Say that.
But what if between meetings, something comes up, um, so.
How how would we handle that? Between.
Yeah, so, uh, so the the problem then becomes.
I mean, from the board, not not from, you know.
I understand that, so from, that the problem has been is that a a board member says, hey, I would like, whatever the case may be, an agenda item and so forth. And so the 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 challenge then becomes is that i- if there is not unanimity amongst the board members on that item. How the question is asked and and how the topic is explored can seriously color the conversation. And 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 so they've been, from a staff perspective, they're left adjudicating that whether a request that was made outside of the board meeting. Where the rest of the board could provide input on that that request. I I director, whomever, would like a staff report, more information, et cetera, about this thing. And that would give other board members an opportunity to say, I too would like some information about that, and I would like this considered or that considered, et cetera. Or I'm not convinced that's a great use of of staff time, which is, I feel like I've said many, many times tonight, it's a finite resource. That when it is allocated to one thing, it is not available to others, so the problem then is that when a a request is raised outside of the boardroom. We're essentially giving a board member preferential access to staff resources and and district time in a way. That could color the debate or the conversation, without other board members having had a chance for their opinion to be input. And left then either to, eh, to Director Jordan's point previously, having only discovered that this was gonna be a topic of discussion on Friday prior to the meeting. Not having time to either request information um, from staff to help reflect their position, et cetera. And then as as the fire chief, I'm left sort of trying to sense whether or not this is a controversial issue. Whether this director speaks for everyone else, and and whether raising this will cause other directors to say, hey, wait a minute. How how is this entered into the conversation, and so the the easiest answer to that is to limit requests for agenda items to the board meeting. When the full board can can have a discussion about, not only should it be an agenda item, but what are the factors that should be considered?
Well, the board can't, nobody else on the board can say it can't be an agenda item.
But, uh, under- understood.
So they have a, you can, i- i- I agree, I I was correcting one thing, so as a group, we, you can always have the right to put something in the agenda. You don't have the right to demand staff time, I think that's kind of the subtle difference.
Right, and the director could say, well, I would like to explore painting all our fire engines purple, and other directors would say, I don't think that's a great idea. And there could be some discussions where we could get a, we get a sense of where this lay, both for staff and for the directors, or other other factors to be included.
I think we used to be on the last item on the agenda, it was anything for future.
Still, it's still on the agenda, yes.
I think I was thinking more between meetings, you know, like one came up for me, you know, in the last few weeks. And. So that's why I had more brought it up, so, no, if 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 that's clear that it can only be on the agenda. Uh, at at a meeting, then then I'm okay with that.
I I would say it's very helpful from a staff perspective to have that that process, because this has been an issue many times in the last several years. And every time, it consumes a bunch of my time, a fair amount of John's time, and a lot of back and forth, trying to figure out what to do with it. Um, because, and some of them are innocuous, and some of them are are third rails.
Yeah, and some of them take, you know, significant lawyer time, et cetera, and actually.
Cause the way to think about it is, even though somebody has the right to ask for something to be in the agenda, somebody else could, could, you know, twist it, you know, much. In in the board meeting, you could say, well, I want that and this too, or, you know.
Well, it helps form a little bit of a consensus upfront about what it is people are interested in talking about. Uh, and therefore therefore sort of shapes the agenda item, and so, you know.
And and things that used to be non-controversial are now in an era where they, so much stuff is hitting a third rail. Even when you don't think it's gonna hit the third rail, to the point where we really need to be very cautious. Putting things in the agenda or even saying things that really are strictly have to do with the business of the of the fire board. Rather than national issues that.
Yes, sir, and we, I think we we do staff at this service, if we potentially allow them to be surreptitiously recruited, this. Whatever flight of emergency a director might ask, that that, and on the other hand, it's hard. It's tremendously awkward uh, for me to tell one of my bosses that I don't think that's pertinent to the fire district's operation, I would much rather that occur amongst.
Among peers of. Among us, correct. Agreed.
Okay, makes sense. Man, uh, one thing I I don't mean to, uh, it seems like you have good consensus here, but one thing I will say, I I guess one question which approach should ask is. What if there's an emergency?
Yeah, it's what we've done in the past, and and things that were potentially controversial in emergency, was giving deference to the president, his role as the chairman. Is essentially, since there's a limitation on being able to talk to everybody, protesting the idea with the president. And seeking some direction about whether or not to proceed, that's the exception, not the rule.
What categories of emergencies do you have in mind?
There've been very few, I I can't think of a fan, there've been two or three items that came up that were short queues, hot ticket. Made a lot of sense to the board, I called the president, said, advise the council, et cetera, et cetera, are you okay with moving this forward and?
But it's something the staff came up with, just staff, what's up on the on the agenda, any time you want to.
Right, we could add it, staff can, correct, but these are things that that were definitely pertaining to matters of the board. And and would would not be just sort of normal sequence of us adding things for the good operations started.
Okay, okay. Understood, what's next?
Um, uh, four point four C. Thought that language was kind of confusing and. It it just didn't read right to me.
Is this, this is the the new C, which is continued.
Uh, the red, yeah.
Verbal, uh, right under the red?
Yeah.
The continued use of verbal conduct that denigrates an individual because of their race, color, gender, blah, blah, blah. Uh, other protected category, uh, disrupts. Uh.
It's just, it's kind of run on, isn't it?
Hmm?
Go ahead, keep going.
Starting the sentence with an it sound.
Yeah.
Hmm?
Starting with continued, you?
No, with, with, start, the, the second sentence, I guess, because it's the long.
Oh, it, it is.
Second turn, I starts with an it, which is a little weird.
Each of the above, yeah. Each of the above interferes with the.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Right?
I see it, I agree.
And, and then the word chilling, I, I, I wasn't sure about the use of that word.
Well, chilling is, is, is a first amendment term, it's not.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
The Supreme Court used it long before it was fashionable.
Yeah, let, let me just say, there, there's a reason, I mean, I, I, I'm not defending it yet, but the, uh. Uh, but there's a reason for what we're trying to do here. And, and let me just explain a little bit about what it is, because there, there is a debate, a lively debate out there. Uh, as you probably know, a lot of jurisdictions are no longer taking comments, uh, over, uh, over. Over video, whatever we call it, over computers, uh, you know.
Be, because. The city of Arinda is one of them.
Right, uh, because of these Zoom bombers that, that have been out there who are, you know, who. Come in and start with Nazi things and other things. Um, uh, the challenge is, you know, a- a- as you know, under US Supreme Court law, uh. There, there's a fair amount of protection even for, uh, a speech that can be pretty distasteful. Uh, and, uh, but the, the focus of this, which mirrors the focus of state law. Is to explain that certain types of conduct. Uh, and this is a very, very lively area, by the way, in the law, so I, 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 I would not say the law's been settled here. But that certain types of conduct does interfere with the board's ability to, and the interference is the key element. Because you can't make judgments based on the nature of the speech itself. In other words, you can't say, oh, I don't, I, you know, I don't like that speech. But think about what happens if, let's just take something less. Difficult example, somebody comes in and says they hate women, right? So we have staff here, uh, and, and, and they shouldn't be subjected. We have, we have obligations under Title VII and other things, not subject them to inappropriate conduct. So that's, wh- what we're framing in this paragraph is that this actually, your take, you by adopting this. Are taking the position that that disrupts the function of the district in the meeting.
Which it does.
Okay, yeah, I, I just think that the language.
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, my bad.
I got, I got.
So do you think, eh, eh, you know, if the city of Arinda thought it was a good idea, is it something we should consider?
Well, it's, it's absolutely a judgment call for the board. I mean, as you know, this just happened in Walnut Creek, I think last.
Last night.
Uh, um, it was a Nazi.
Neo-Nazi.
Neo-Nazi guy, uh.
At, at a physical meeting or?
He was actually at the, at the physical meeting, was he was, uh.
He integrated the mayor because of his religion and.
Well, it, it happened to a personal friend of mine at Oakland City Council meeting, where she sho- showed up and. I read about it and.
And it happened in Cordera as well, uh, which we represent. So here, here are your choices, and this is, I mean, this is legitimate policy choice, right? Um, the safest legal course, without any doubt at all, uh, is not to take comment. But what we've learned through, um, uh.
Is not to take comment.
Is not to take, but hybrid public comment.
Hybrid.
I mean, obviously.
Because we have to take on the Brown Act.
Right, in here in Walnut Creek, uh, because the person came into person, so it didn't matter. But, but that, in some ways that's safe, but the problem with it is that, you know, throughout COVID, we've learned that far more people are now listening.
Oh, I, I agree.
And that's good for the community, it's good for the board and it's good for the district.
Uh, but we could change, if it, if it happened, we could then change.
They could change.
You could change.
So, so as long as things are going okay, let's leave it the way it is.
Yeah, yeah, so, but, but what I am telling you is, you know, and, and I mean, I normally don't talk about legal risk in public. But, but this is something that I, I will say, is, you know. There are a number of jurisdictions that are adopting something like what we, what I proposed to you. Uh, but, you know, there, there is still the threat that somebody could come along and try to sue you and say, no, 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 you're really discriminating based on my viewpoint.
And that's why we interrupt, read the statement, but still give them the opportunity to. Civilly and politely exercise First Amendment rights for the remainder of their allotted time.
That's exactly.
Right. No, I'm, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I'm too.
What's next?
I, I, I have one, I only have one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, voting procedure eight. And I, I just wanted to bring this up, so let's just, um, so when, when, when our.
Or which one?
Uh, well, just, uh, eight part one.
Eight part.
So when we vote. Um. Um, the, the clerk, Marcia here, calls, calls us to vote. I, I, I'm just curious about the order that we use for voting. Do you do it by alphabetical order?
I do. I put the president last.
Yeah, the president last.
Regardless of whether the name, because right now, it's called alphabetically because my last name is the last, but if it wasn't.
Well, yeah, I think, I think the president should stay last.
Yeah, I, I agree.
But.
Correct, alphabetical and then the president's last.
Okay, and, and who makes that call? I mean, did you make the call? I'm just asking, who makes that call that it should be alphabetical?
It, it was the practice when I arrived, so I followed the same.
So is there any, is there anything in Roberts or anything about actual vote? I, I'm, 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 I have a personal stake in this because I'm always first. And I might not always want to be first, so.
And if you were in Congress, they do it alphabetically. I think they do, so you would vote before E, G.
Okay, I'm just, I, I want to ask the question about.
Roberts does have a section on this, I unfortunately I can't remember offhand.
So, maybe we can bring that back.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess the good news is if it, if, if, because we are, we're voting on the fact that it will be Roberts, so if Roberts does have a section on it.
If Robert says it's alphabetical, then I'm okay with that, but, I mean, there may, I'm okay with it right now, but. There were good times in the past when I wasn't the presiding officer, when maybe I didn't want to be first.
I get it.
For, for whatever reason, you know, there are times when maybe you want to be last.
I get it.
Or next to last.
Well, let me, let me take a look at that, uh, we're going to have to bring this back anyway to, to the final cleanup version, so, uh, I'll take a look at that.
And I don't know.
I'll send you, I could just send you.
I don't know what it says, okay.
I'll just send you the Robert section.
So we just, uh.
So now you have your feedback.
Okay, uh, any, anything else, though, any other?
Um, I, I, well, I said that, that was my last one, but I have a general question, is if we approve this. And we eliminate the board secretary and treasurer positions and add the second vice president. Um, what happens to the people who are in those positions now? I mean, do we, how do we, how do we feel? What do we do? I mean, does it happen immediately when we approve this? Or does it happen at a later time, or how does that work?
Question, so can, can we have a, can we just have a board agreement to make a vote? But I would propose, for example, this, we're just getting, we're just switching titles, right?
Well, so you've only got, you're only doing three now anyway, right? Because there's no secretary.
Right, we're going to delete secretary and.
And add, and add first vice president, or add something, right?
So, yeah, so why wouldn't we just take the?
We currently, well, we currently have president, vice president, treasurer and secretary.
Oh, we have all four.
Yes.
And what are we going to add?
And.
Second vice president.
Four.
But we're going to get rid of treasurer because nobody's treasury.
Yeah.
Performing, secretary.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, so that's an interesting point, so we could make it effective.
On final passage.
Uh, well.
Why don't we make it effective at the next, at the end, at the end, at the next election?
At the end of the year.
We have our next election.
That's what I would.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
You agree with that?
Yeah.
All right, that's fine.
That's what I would say.
Yeah.
And, and so we, we wait to. Oh, so would, so, so all this would be, that part, just that part would be effective?
Yeah, what I, what I, I'll write it in as, you know, uh, uh. Nothing herein shall, you know, affect those who have been appointed prior.
Oh, okay. Fine.
Uh, uh, or something, I'll find some way.
Okay, all right, that's, that's it for me.
Okay.
Okay, that's really the last one?
No. Do we?
You like when I say one more, oh, no, okay.
Um, so I will, uh, I will rework this and, uh, we will have hopefully, uh, final, a final draft, uh, a final, final.
And do we have to have multiple readings of this?
We do not.
We don't, okay, so you'll just prepare for the, for a final vote approval, approval next in the margin. Okay, great.
Like make up a comment?
Of a comment?
Yep.
Uh, two comments, one, I don't have chapter and verse, but I believe it says, uh, direct task to be recognized, and you guys don't do that. And which I think is fine, it just looks funny, you might agree if you say one, say you're going to do one thing and do something else. So I would.
Wait, Jonathan, repeat that again, I'm not quite sure we caught it.
I'm sorry, um.
Raise your hand and get recognized.
You're right, yeah, that, that, and I was aware of that when I.
If you're talking, yeah.
It, you know, it's, it's formal.
How about if you let me speak, right?
Yeah, go ahead, I was just trying to clarify your comments.
Well, I understand that, but then you kept talking, well, I know, but, but it's my, my meter's running, not yours, you'll get your chance, trust me. Um.
Go ahead.
It, it is more formal, sometimes, I think, sometimes it's actually necessary. Um, a lot of these things are just not necessary when you guys are getting along. Uh, it's, it's been different in the past. Um, so my suggestion is that, um, the language be altered to say, at the discretion of the. Uh, presiding officer and the same rule will apply to all board members if it switches from one to the other. Um, the, uh, second comment is about, uh, I, I. Want to express, and I'm going to run out of time pretty soon here, but, uh, this is, oh, no, well. I wore my glasses, I could see I got enough time. Um. It's about the, uh, I. Start over. I want to express a great deal of sympathy for Director Jorgan's concern about having enough time. On many occasions to plod through this thing. Now, of course, I speak for the hundreds and hundreds of. Citizens who, who do that on a monthly basis, possibly. Um, and I want to suggest a, 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 and a, a way of doing this that's a little cleaner than what you guys are discussing. And, you know, maybe it'll be helpful. Uh, on the website where it has agendas and all that stuff, have another slot. That says, uh, very long items that will be, uh, discussed in the, uh, in the upcoming agenda. That will be published, uh, by the Wednesday before. Um, and with the understanding that these are subject to change, it's not final. Uh, but, you know, so you can't slip it in later on, just have that cut off. And then they'd be available to everybody, uh, and, and maybe send out, you know, I don't know, or, or not. An email, um, you know, alerting people that, you know, heads up, there's a big one coming. Uh, take a look at it, and this would all be done at the discretion of the fire chief. If you don't like it, if, if, you know, if you thought something should have been, just complain to the chief and he'll tell you that you'll probably have better luck next time. And that, that does it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. Other board, uh, other public comment?
We do not have any more, um, public comment.
All right. My understanding is we don't need a motion on this because it's, we're just moving on. Okay, so we should move on to nine point six, the discussion regarding the addition to the rules of procedure, section four point seven. Friend B under friend, conflict of interest and section eleven regarding the successorship of election of officers.
So this was the item, uh, that, uh, we separated out from, from the rules. Uh, the, uh, so there are two pieces of this, uh, one, uh, it was, uh, uh, proposed by, uh. Director Jorgens, which relates to the conflict of interest, uh, uh, provisions. Uh, and, uh, whether we're going to create any conflict of interest provisions, and if so, what are they going to say? And then, uh, the second piece was, uh, from Director Danziger with respect to, uh, language that. Uh, essentially precludes president from being elected twice in a row unless everybody else passes. So those are the two issues.
Um, so, uh, I'll just take the election of officers, uh, first, um, I'm fine. With, uh, with the way it is, the, and the section that no board member shall serve. Uh, uh, more than one consecutive year unless everyone else declines, I'm fine with that. Um, as far as the other conflict of interest, uh, provision. Um, I really think that it goes a little too far and it's arbitrary and capricious. And it goes beyond from what I could read about it and from what I read from, uh, legal counsel goes beyond state law. I feel it would be burdensome and difficult to manage and enforce. Um, there's already laws that regarding conflict of interest, which would pertain to the board. And I would support, I, I, I don't think we should include this new language. But I'm in favor of referencing the, uh, Levine Act and the rules of procedures and including it as an attachment. And, uh, just using that. I'm happy to say on that.
Any other board members have comment? And I'm assuming Director Hasler is still having, uh, able to follow the.
Yeah, I'm still following, I'm still following.
I'm not pressing you to say anything, but I'm giving you the opportunity to do so.
No, I, I, no, I don't have any other comments on these, I mean, I think on conflict of interest, we should probably be following. I, I, I guess I don't think we should be blazing new territory here, and I'm not sure, I, I'm just trying to figure out. You know, I think we saw some stuff from counsel on that one, and I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm not a hundred percent sure of the problem, it, it's, it's resolving, so I, I don't, I don't know where we go on that one.
Anybody else?
So, uh, I, I just need guidance here, uh, and again, this is a guidance item, not, uh, there's no enactment for today, but, um. So, I see Director Danziger essentially being fine with the, the language that we've now put in. Uh, with respect to the non succession, so, uh, so I, I think we're done with that unless there's any, any objection.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, and then the, the question then is on the conflict of interest issue, are, are we going to let it drop? Do we just put a Levine Act in the, in, in it, or, or do we want some other game?
I guess the Levine Act is the law anyway.
It is.
Uh, I mean, it's, we, we have the authority to do something more strict if we chose to.
You do.
Uh, but that's, I don't think we need to quote the law since it's the law, we, there are a lot of other laws for subject to that we don't quote.
Right.
Um, so I guess I would leave it the way it is, the way it was, and I believe it is.
I would, I would agree with the, um, I mean, uh, there's a lot that we're defying.
So I think it's just. Yeah, I mean, Levine Act applies and it's, it's quite strict, uh, so, uh, except that.
It, it ignores our largest contract.
Uh, except it does, in fact, exempts labor contracts, uh, and as well, uh. Competitively bid contracts and personal contracts, but personally, I mean, personal contracts, that's, I mean, the only personal contract I think that we have.
I'm not sure, just as a. No, please, this is not anything that I would even think of accusing anybody, much especially our chief of doing, but. I don't understand why that would be an exception, because if somebody says, hey, here's a thousand dollars to three of the, uh, three of the board members. And by the way, now you can negotiate my contract, that's not good, so why in the world would that be an exception?
Yeah, I, I, I. Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to discredit that point, but.
Because your, your letter had, had some references to things that happened in, uh, like the coastal commission or something?
Yeah.
Where there were blatant, I mean, bribery.
Well, that's why they enacted the act.
Yeah, 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 so, all right, so we're going to leave this alone for now.
Right, I mean, I would, I would have comments to say, but I think we do have a consensus, I agree with Director Hasler, Director Danziger. With Director Jorgens, I think that we have a shrine in the law, very specific, uh, issues with regard to conflict of interest. Under the Levine Act, uh, they've carved out an issue, uh, for labor unions. Citizens United has as well, so I think I agree with Director. Hasler that we don't need to necessarily blaze new territory at this time.
So no changes on?
We don't need to make any changes, okay.
From the original text that before, and. Okay, it's from the original text before, in, from a year ago.
Yes, yes, yes. The existing rules or, there will be no change on it. Um, so, uh, our ace legal researcher, uh, uh, Chief Winnaker, uh, uh, has Robert's rules as we're speaking, and, uh, the roll call is in alphabetical order, except that the presiding officer's name is called last.
Okay. Changing my.
Change your name, there you go.
Yeah.
Winzki or something.
Is that a clear? The first three letters.
That's right. The first three letters.
Yeah, just drop that.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for clarifying that. There you go. Okay.
All right, so we're going on to committee reports.
We're gonna invite public comment.
Oh, we invite public comment on the committee reports?
On our nine point six regular.
Oh, on nine point six, okay. Sorry.
Uh, Jonathan Goodwin in Canyon, um, I I think I understand what you're saying, but I'd like to hear it in plain language, that labor contracts uh, are exempted from a conflict of interest concerns. Is that, is that?
Yeah, Jonathan, I, I can respond. Yeah, um, Levine Act, which we're talking about, which is a state law, uh, uh, which is fairly recent, uh.
When it into effect, January first, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, yeah. Um, it, it basically limits, uh, if, if you've received two hundred fifty dollars or more from any party to, among other things, a contract, although it's, it's also, it, it has to do with entitlements and other things as well. Uh, then, then the director who, who's done that can't vote on the item. However, the Levine Act has three very specific exceptions uh, that are in it currently, and those exceptions are uh, labor contracts. I'm doing this from memory now, if I can find it. Uh, it's, it's, uh, labor contracts, personal contracts, and, uh, uh, competitively bid contracts.
I see. Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that. I just want to suggest to Director Danziger that there's gonna be an election for two seats on the board. You might try to recruit people with, uh, A, B, or C, last names ending with A, B, or C. It's an alternative strategy.
There you go. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
We do not have any more public comment.
All right. Agenda item ten, committee reports. Ten point one, standing audit committee, Directors Hasler and Jackson.
Nothing to report.
Ten point two, ad hoc committee joint fire prevention with City of Veranda, Directors Jorgens and Romer. I don't think we have any.
We're having a meeting on the twenty-first of March or something.
Twenty-first of March.
Is that what they call two by two?
Two by two, yes.
And when is it?
The twenty-first of March.
Uh, okay, so eleven announcements.
So we can take public comment on the committees? And we do not have any public comment.
Agenda item eleven, announcements. Eleven point one, future agenda items.
Um, I, I do have one future agenda item, and there's no, um, urgent need to have this on next month, and I'll just leave it up to, to you and staff, but the item is to discuss, uh, recognition of various groups and traditions that fall outside of the district's, uh, scope. And so that, that is that is, uh, recognitions of, uh, you know, months, like this month is Black History Month, and we have, uh, LGBTQ month and things like that. And so I'd like to have a discussion regarding that.
So generally, the category of, right?
Yeah, so.
Recognizations and conformation.
This came up because, uh, Director Danziger, uh, had been asking about a particular one, and, um, the the chief suggested, and I think it makes sense, that rather than being ad hoc, that you guys have a general discussion about how you would like to handle these kinds of recognitions, because obviously, one of the challenges of this is, for every group you recognize, there ten you're not.
Fifty you're not. There's, there's a, there's a, a group for every day of the week.
Well, I think Oakland City Council is up to thirty-six.
Right.
You know, thirty-one month-long.
Thirty-one is in a twelve-month year.
So, so I, what we suggested to Director Danziger, which he's now bringing here, and it makes sense, is rather than do this ad hoc and then constantly have to try to keep up, let's have just a general discussion in the next meeting about how you'd like to handle those issues.
Right. And that would include, for example, a discussion of whether it's appropriate to take ten seconds at the end of the in honor of such and such a month we adjourn. I mean, if that's a ten-second statement and we're not required to take public comment, well, that would be something we'd discuss.
That's what we're gonna discuss.
I mean, I, yeah, again.
Next.
I don't think any of us would presume to tell directors what to say or not to say in any given situations, more about what you would do as a group.
Right. No, understood. Okay.
You know, and so I, I, we thought it would be better to just have general guidance about how we're gonna approach these things, uh, so that we don't inadvertently insult one group when recognizing another.
Yes.
Right.
Understood. Okay. Uh, I think that's it, isn't it?
We can open public comment?
Need to discuss, we need to take public comment on the future agenda? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
You?
Do we have any public comment?
I'm sorry, my, my mouse is having a lot of difficulty this evening. There we go. We do not have any public comment.
Then is it appropriate to entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm ready to adjourn.
I'd like to make that motion. I'm still gonna make it tonight?
I'll second.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna join this meet, uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting recognition that February is Black History Month.
And I'll second.
Director Danziger?
Aye.
Director Hasler?
Aye.
Director Jackson?
Aye.
Director Jorgens?
Aye.
President Romer?
Aye.
And time is nine thirty-eight.
Well.
Thank you.